More for less, and those left without a chair, or in this instance, without a home, by definition are unhoused. So this really brings the housing issue into a very concrete awareness. We're in a growth area, so this demand issue directly increases homelessness and directly increases expenses for the city, including public safety. So housing is such a core issue for us getting the city budgets, arms around it, and getting public safety costs, and getting our arms around it. Cities that are unable to encourage enough additional housing to ensure exceeding demand, homelessness increases, and with homelessness ensures escalating costs for the city and its citizens. It's in all of our best interests, city and citizens, to assure that we're encouraging infill housing, meaning additional housing within existing neighborhoods. More apartments by major transit hubs are not enough. We need to encourage and make additional housing within existing neighborhoods economically feasible and accessible for regular folk. The Economic Development Committee just reviewed the middle housing section of the comprehensive plan. There are quite a few areas in which decisions need to be made regarding how much Des Moines will encourage infill housing, additional housing within existing neighborhoods, by the design of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan itself really impacts our public safety costs and homelessness. Of course, that's for every city. And in support of that decision-making, I have bought the council members' books. You'll find them in your boxes. This is a new book. It's really well-written. It's easy to read. It's called "Escaping the Housing Trap." If any of you are interested, this is a fabulous book. It builds the case for the comprehensive plan going beyond what the state mandates to allow middle housing in all of Des Moines and to encourage both middle housing and ADUs where sewer allows, wetlands, or soil instability are not an issue. We can all be part of the solution. We can increase city revenue and decrease the rise of homelessness due to housing shortages. To me, this is becoming a no-brainer. We need to encourage more housing on every level, including infill housing. More housing equals more revenue for the city. More housing equals less homelessness. Less homelessness means lower city expenses, including public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Next up, we have Bill Lynn Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, staff, everybody gathered here tonight. Just two items I wanted to comment on tonight. One is I brought my green dot. I do support the Landmark on the Sound, whatever we can do to preserve it. I actually believe in the Big Bang Theory to that. I think our problem is with the owner, so we need a different owner, and I don't know why the city can't become that owner. I know it's a lot of money, but you're outgrowing everything else. You could consolidate everything in the Hill, and you could, I think, get a ton of money while people supporting a city that's doing the right thing. And you could sell all the rest of this property. Anyway, the second thing I'd like to comment on is the steps, the Marina Steps. I saw the briefing at the committee meeting, and I'm for the city steps. I think they're going to be a great addition. There's one piece of it, though, that I think is going to be a little disappointing in all directions, and that is where we're trying to put in kind of a recreational kids' park feature in a sliver of it running down the north side. I think when you hear the public say, "We want kids' park features included," I think they're talking more than just one little sliver. That feature's never going to be enough to attract people to come to Des Moines for it. We need a park feature for the kids that is closer to the mud flats, because that's where the kids run to. And that area where the Watson House is, I think, would be perfect, but we need more than just that one little feature. It's got to have things that bring people to that park area so their kids can recreate. And we raised five kids. Whenever we took them to the park, line of sight is important. That gives you one area where it's consolidated, and you can keep your eye on your kids as they're running all over, even in the mud flats. Thank you very much. Oh, one last thing. I do think you ought to have another public meeting on that. There was some debate. You're really close to done with it, and I understand that piece, but I'm not sure there shouldn't be a little option that you have separately priced that would put some plateaus in there that might turn into revenue features. And we do need revenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Next up is Lloyd Leidl.
Thank you, Mayor Buxton, members of the council. I'd like to advocate tonight for preservation and revitalization of the Masonic Home, also known as Landmark on the Sound, and some of the benefits that would provide to the community. I agree with Bill, and also I want to thank everybody who wore green tonight in support of Landmark on the Sound. Yeah, I mean, this is a nice building and all, but to be honest, you know, it's a little bit bunker-style, no natural lighting. The outside of the building, it's like pure functionality. There's no awe and wonder, which you find up at the Masonic Home, you know? Maybe you guys need a new digs, you know? A lot of other cities have that kind of spectacular city hall. Why not Des Moines? And, you know, that's one of the themes I want to talk about tonight is, Des Moines is a unique place. We've got a lot of amazing history and heritage here, and, you know, why get rid of that? I think Des Moines, or any city ought to have some community standards, so developers, when they come to the city, we want to work with developers, but, you know, we don't want them to come and destroy our city. We want to keep a high level. And, let's see here. You could tear it down and put in, you know, high-density condos or something like that, and you would get a tax revenue increase. But even, you know, major cities with millions of people, their budgets go up and down, you know? Budgets are kind of like the weather, when you're up, when you're down. And so, but something like the Masonic Home, it's like been there for almost 100 years, you know? It's a unique place. It's kind of like an Eiffel Tower, something like that. Something like, it's like a focal point that draws people to the community and provides like a sense of place and belonging and a sense of awe and wonder. And, you know, it's an amazing asset, so why should we destroy it? And the city does have the authority to reject the demolition plan. The current mitigation, which is kind of like a compensation the developer gives if you're going to tear something down, doesn't seem quite adequate. There's about a $700,000 proposal to fund other historical places around the city, but to be honest, there's not a ton of other really significant historical places, at least on the level of something like the Landmark on the Sound. So it seems a little bit like not getting a good deal for that. So don't think we should approve for that. And, let's see. Just having a place where people can gather and get out and talk to one another. And I agree with Bill, like the child area down there at the Marina Steps ought to be bigger, you know? If you're making a place for kids, it's going to draw families and community, and you could do something like that at the Masonic Home, too, you know? It's right next to an elementary school. There's beautiful forests there for the kids to walk around in. You could have kid-friendly events, music on the lawn, movies, movie nights. And, yeah, it brings a lot of community cohesion, and I think we should preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Let's see who we have here. Charles and Larry. So next up, we have Scott Kawahara.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Scott Kawahara. I live in the Zenith area, and I'm here to speak on behalf of advocating for the Masonic Home, the preservation thereof. The Masonic Home was completed in 1926 and was celebrated as the grandest structure in the area. The city of Des Moines itself was incorporated 33 years later in 1959, and Zenith itself was annexed into the city in 1982. Since then, 13 additional areas have been annexed in the area, which means that Zenith, or the Masonic Home itself, was in existence prior to the city. The King County and Seattle Landmarks list only lists two locations as historical landmarks. One is the Des Moines Beach Historic District, better known as the Covenant Bible Camp, and the other one is the Des Moines Activity Center. I have packets for you to look at later. So ironically, those, I took pictures of the Des Moines Activity Center as well as the Bible Camp, the pier, which is iconic in Des Moines, and the Masonic Home, and I showed it to a group of people that I regularly interact with in federal way, and there's about 15 of them. The only thing, the two things that they recognized was the pier and the Masonic Home. And it was, yeah, that's Des Moines. The Masonic Home is Des Moines. The Google search, I did a Google search of Des Moines, Washington, just entering the words "Des Moines, Washington," and if you go to the images section, the only most frequently repeatable image of a structure in that search is, in fact, the Masonic Home. Entering an additional Google search of historic areas of Des Moines, Washington, three things come up, the top three things. One is a bubbleator down at Redondo Beach, and I actually went by and saw the old bubbleator and went, "Oh, wow, there it is." The second one is a picture of the Des Moines Historical Society, and the third one is, in fact, the Masonic Home again. Webster defines iconic as something widely recognized and well-established, or widely known and acknowledged especially for distinctive excellence. It defines historic as having great and lasting importance, known or established in the past and dating from or preserved from pastime or culture. And landmark is a conspicuous object on land that marks a locality, an anatomical structure used as a point of orientation and locating other structures. I would say that the Masonic Home fulfills the definition of iconic, historical, and landmark. I would encourage you to support anything that preserves that landmark in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kawahara. Charles, I'm going to take two of these signatures together, even though they're separated. Mr. Pettibone, if you'll forgive me here for a moment. So both Charles Ballard and Larry Scott, you have signed up because you wanted to give public comment in regard to the hearing, correct? Is that you two right there? You, okay, the easement. So that is part of a public hearing that we have, and you're free to give comment right now if you would like, but it will not go on record as being part of the comment for the hearing itself. If you would like your comments to go down as a legal part of that process, you would need to wait until we open the public hearing, and it will be a little bit. We've got some conversations coming up.
Is that the same meeting?
Yes, it's the same meeting. So you'll be here for a while if you want to wait. Is that all right with you? Okay, all right. So I'm going to let you guys go later, and so next up, we have George Pettibone.
Good evening to all of you, Mayor Buxton, city council members, staff. My name is George Pettibone. I live in the Zenith hillside, and I'm here to discuss the possible preservation of the Masonic Home. We've been very, very carefully trying to make all of our words come out without hurting anybody's feelings or getting a developer angry at us or anything like that, and we've tried to do this, but it's been going on quite a while, and we're faced with silence. Everything that we try and say is, "Okay, thank you, bye," silence. Nobody from the developer has come and spoke before you guys, or us, or anybody. Nobody has addressed anything at all as what the developer has on his agenda. He is a very powerful developer of major buildings, and there is no discussion as to what he's trying to do. So we have no idea what kind of things are coming out of this silence. This silence is deafening, and so we could think of a major hotel, or a hospital, or a retirement facility, or a training facility for nurses and doctors. We could think of quite a few things that comply with the current law. Zoning laws are still very, very strong all over the world. Everybody knows what zoning laws are. IC means institutional campus. There's only four institutional campus properties in the state, in the city of Des Moines, and an institutional campus is not the same at all of apartments, or dwellings, or tilt-up warehouses, or hog-slaughtering factories, or gravel-crushing factories. We have no idea what we're up against. Low traffic coming and going from an IC zoning has been very favorable to all of us. We like the idea that people are quite elderly in an elderly thing called the Masonic Home. They didn't make any noise. They didn't go to work in the morning. It's been very nice. So if we have a whole bunch of people trying to get in and out of there, it would require an absolutely formidable amount of problems, and it's just ridiculous to think of 500, 600, 2,000 condominium units. There's condominium units being built in Seattle now that are under 200 square feet. They're trying to sell apartments for 180 square feet in Seattle now. We are the leader in the nation in tiny, tiny apartments. If that's the wave of the future, I don't want it in Des Moines. There's nobody can tell me that living in 180-square-feet apartment is a wonderful life, and it's certainly not. Developers could try it. They're doing it in Seattle, but this is something we must fight back against. But anyway, I guess it kind of reminds me of The Silence of the Lambs. We are being led down the road, and The Silence of the Lambs is a movie that will give you a quick idea of what happens to lambs. Thank you for your interest, and I hope we can stop this thing and turn it into preservation.
Thank you, Mr. Pettibone. Next up, I have Kay Van. See, oh, there she is.
Good evening. My name is Kay Van, down in Redondo Beach. Thank you for everyone to listen. Sorry, I'm nervous today. Thank you, everyone, for listening to what I have to say tonight. We have police present for the last week, which is great, because when the bad people from the surrounding city comes down, they see the police present, they radio, however they do it, we don't see any other ones comes down, so it stays quiet. The cameras is great on the north, on the Redondo Beach Way and down on the south side, but in where the bathroom, the surrounding area around the bathroom, is where families and elderly and kids are around there. They're still using that area as a speedway, so they use the crosswalk as a start line, or start, whatever you call it, for the race people, and they zoom up and down the street. So I would like to see if there's something else can be done in that part. And I witnessed last week a little child, which is about almost two or three, next to his parents, almost walked into the street where that one car sped off from the stop Motorcycles, they tend to come down and park right where the arch is in the bathroom, and that's where the families are gathering. They don't care who is there. They come, they drive up the sidewalk, and they find their parking, and they park there. I talked to our officers, and he says, "Well, we have to pick and choose. Where do you want them to park? Take a parking on the street, or what do you want them to do?" Well, I don't know. My career path is in HR recruiting. I have no clue. So, city engineer, please help. You know, maybe they can park in the parking, parking, you know? Pay for parking. Everybody else pays for parking. Why can't they pay for parking? Next one is 280th and 281st on the west side, where a year and a half ago, the city suggested painting it as an emergency lane with emergency sign. That does nothing. And a couple weeks ago, one of our residents went and asked him to not speed, and something happened, and she's not here with us anymore. So something else needs to be done there. I don't know how many, or one or two more people's lives have to be affected before something else has to be done. Let's see. I want to piggyback on the Masonic Home. I was out in the water today. It looks good.
Oh, okay. Oh, Masonic Home? That's all, that's all you can say?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be back next time.
Good, thank you. We'll look forward to it. Thanks, Kay. Appreciate it. Next up, Barbara McMichael. There she is.
Good evening, Barbara McMichael from Des Moines. I'll be talking about Des Moines Creek Business Park West, but first a climate check. For the last, for two consecutive days earlier this week, global temperatures hit the highest levels in recorded history. This is after 13 straight months of unprecedented temperatures worldwide, and right here, we all endured our own record-breaking heat wave earlier this month. Situated under the airport flight path, Des Moines already suffers from heavy environmental impacts. Even so, we need to come up with concrete solutions, or maybe I should say anti-concrete solutions, to do our part to keep things from getting worse. For example, that determination of non-significance for Des Moines Creek Business Park West made me wonder, and this sounds rude, I don't mean it to be, if our acting SEPA official and I are living on the same planet. Des Moines Municipal Code 1605310-4A1 talks about fulfilling the responsibilities of our generation as trustees of the environment for succeeding generations. We won't be if we let that business park project go forward. It proposes removing well over 800,000 square feet of vegetation, including native trees. It proposes the construction of a 400,000-square-foot commercial industrial building, enough pavement for 400 parking stalls. It'll bring in an additional 870 vehicular trips a day. Yesterday, I was with an outer-towner walking on that very property, on the connector trail between 216th and Des Moines Creek. Trees on either side of the path are tall and cooling and cleaning the area, twitter with bird-like, but the SEPA non-significance determination describes the wildlife as typical, urban, and disturbance-tolerant birds and mammals. That just doesn't do justice to the owls and piliated woodpeckers and kingfishers and wide array of songbirds that other Des Moines residents and I regularly see in the space. And how is it non-significant that local streams and wetlands are going to be re-engineered? If you've seen the retention pond at 20th Avenue on the north side of 216th, how it's filled with black plastic hexagonal blocks, creating a black plastic desert as the surface of the retention pond, not even allowing habitat for frogs. So I can't in any way understand how allowing the business park proposal to move forward would adhere to Municipal Code 1605310-4A2, which assures safe, healthful, aesthetically pleasing surroundings, or 4A3, attaining the widest range of beneficial uses of the environment without degradation or other undesirable consequences. So finally, I point to 1605310-4E, the city's policy to protect its residents from the long-term consequences of successive incremental negative environmental impacts associated with a specific proposal or its connected actions. Accordingly, the city can condition or deny proposals in order to mitigate or prevent such long-term impacts. I say, given the frightening climate changes coming on, deny the proposal. We don't need more concrete. We do need more trees.
Thank you, Barbara. So I do generally ask, is there anyone who wanted to give public comment and didn't realize they needed to sign up? But that's the only people that I will be open to here. If you wanted, if you thought you were coming here to give comment and you didn't realize you needed to sign up? All right. Thank you very much. Pass this on to him. Okay, thank you very much. So moving on, we have committee chair reports, and this afternoon, late this afternoon, we had a couple of committee meetings, and I'm going to pass a baton for these meetings' municipal facilities and also economic development to Chair Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. So in municipal facilities tonight, we were brought up to date on the Marina Steps project. We received a grant for $500,000 for the bio-retention and are working with PSE to underground the utilities. And tonight, on the consent agenda, will be a proposal to amend the task agreement, and this fall, we have to be under contract for ARPA. And then on item number three for CIP object, I'm sorry, CIP project subdate, Midway Park acquisition, we're still working on. Update will be brought to council in August. Cecil Powell Park, looks like it'll be done under the contract working days. The Fieldhouse update should be done in late September. There was a bust in subcontractor to the contractor on the design for the slide, which there are ongoing conversations with the contractor and the city, the subcontractor on that. The Triangle Memorial Park, we're to 90% plans and design, and should start construction in fall. And then we were brought up to date on the Founder's Lodge and the structural components. It looks like Highline, High School, Highline Schools is looking at that to expand their, I'm sorry, the Maritime, thank you, the Maritime High School. And so we're talking with them about the upgrades that need to be done with them, with the Founder's Lodge, and that was pretty much it for the municipal facilities. Onto economic development. Sorry, I'm trying to get to...
No worries. Take your time.
First page here. Comprehensive Plan update with the health, healthy Des Moines element, just bringing Chapter 12 to bring adequate, healthy foods to portions of Des Moines, and what that was going to look like. And then we had a high-level overview on the middle housing project and briefing. There were three items brought, just basic, high-level. There were some questions asked, and we look forward to a next meeting that would have to dig in a little deeper, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Next up, we have a meeting that's kind of more of a regional forum, and Councilmember Mahoney is our liaison, or actually a board member there, so I'm going to ask him to report out.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, at Highland College, we had the Highline Forum. It's a, it's a meeting led by the port, but surrounding communities of the airport, plus other agencies, educational institutions, and so forth get together. The main subject of yesterday's meeting was workforce development, and we had a presentation from several organizations of how they're trying to create training and education for jobs, particularly in construction, port, port jobs, and other employment, and it's really great, especially geared toward the BIPOC community, where a lot of them are economically disadvantaged and so forth, and so it's ways to set them up for good-paying jobs and so forth. The other, and it was, it was almost a good part of the two hours, but fascinating on what different agencies are doing. We got a StartUp date, which is a group that meets on airport concerns, and also there, we went over and reviewed language. The port is trying to have language for asking for a voluntary program from our airlines to use single-engine taxi. It wastes less fuel. It's supposed to be a little less noisy. The key is it's voluntary. It's not something that is FAA-regulated or enforced too much. They did have some success at night flights when they did this and some other things, so they're optimistic that they'll see results. The other thing is, is on September 20... The other thing is, is on September twenty-fifth, uh, of this year, the, uh, Des Moines will be the host and we'll be doing a presentation there as well. A lot of details to follow. Did you want me to talk about the parade too now?
Um, um, let me see. If it will end up helping you during your comments at the end, yes.
Yeah, let's, let's just talk. So, uh, as all you know, we had Waterland Weekend and we had the parade this last week. If you don't know Jack, uh, Jack Kelsey was our grand marshal. Uh, it was a great event. And if anybody there would see what we truly are as a mix of, of people in the city. I want to thank Tim, I want to thank your city staff. And I'm going to forget somebody, um, but the, you know, the Marina staff, the event staff, the park creation, and Parks Recreation, the police, the Public Works, South King County Fire, we're all great participants in it. And I wholeheartedly thank you guys for your, your, you know, partnership in that. Uh, the Destination Des Moines Board that puts it on did a great job as well. Judson Park, who hosted part of the event. Uh, the, the volunteers were phenomenal. We always need volunteers for the parade. Um, Highline School was part of it. They, they let us use some of their facilities, Highline College as well. Um, the Des Moines Yacht Club provided the boats and, uh, hydroplanes for the kids. Uh, as always, the Seafair Clowns, the Pirates and kind of the, the Parade Police, the Marshals, which are unappreciated, showed up. I'd like, the Des Moines Theater owners did a fantastic job as well. And I want to thank them and Print Place, uh, new owners there. They donated some services as well. But it was a successful event and it was what we try to achieve. It, it brings the community together where we celebrate our differences rather than point them out. So I want to thank a lot of people for a great event.
Thank you. Well, I know you're not going to toot your own horn, but I don't know how it would come off if it weren't for you. So, thank you for giving, pouring into this, especially the parade part, every year since you've been elected. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah. So, uh, next, oh, I also want to give a little report out. I'm, I am on the Executive Board for South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. Uh, there are four, thirteen cities, I think. Anyway, all the South County cities have partnered together, pooled together, some legislative, um, allowance funds that the cities are able to collect through sales tax. And we pool these funds together, plus a few other things, and work to provide affordable housing right now. That's been our main work since we formed. I think it was four years ago, twenty nineteen, maybe. And, uh, but it's called South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. And that's always been part of our vision to also begin to address homelessness issues in our cities and how to address it, what, what's the best way to go. And so this last week, we decided to really focus on incorporating that second H and working, working toward that. We've got a small staff, but the board really wants to move into that arena. So more coming up down the road this next year, but, uh, that was kind of a over-the-hump on that. So I appreciated that work this last week. All right, so that's enough for committee chair reports. I'm going to move on to the city manager's part and I'll hand that over to City Manager Tim George.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we just have a couple of staff presentations tonight. We'll start off with our Finance Director, Jeff Friend, who is going to provide a informational update on the city's Proposition One that is going to be on the ballot on August sixth. Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening Deputy Mayor, Council and members of the public. Uh, this is an informational presentation on, uh, Proposition One, uh, resulting mainly from some of the, uh, questions we've received, uh, at City Hall concerning the proposition. So to begin with, first question is why? Um, and the chart below shows a large reason why. That is the Consumer Price Index, uh, or Inflation Rate, uh, for, uh, the Seattle area since 2020. Uh, as you can see, it has, goes, it gets very high in 2022. So in 2020, uh, this Consumer Price Index was point nine percent. And then inflation rose all the way up to ten point one percent in June of 2022. And then now, uh, then down to four point six and three point eight. So what we've had happen with the city and is, we've all felt personally, is the costs of things have gone up. So according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics Inflation Calculator, what cost a dollar in June of 2020 now costs a dollar twenty-two in June of 2024. So what that means for the city is, um, basically our expenditures, the costs have increased at a rate, um, that exceeds the growth of our revenues. So if you, in this chart, the, uh, yellow line is our revenue, uh, since 2020 and the gray line is our expenditures. And you see in 2020 and 2021, all the way up through 2022, when we hit the ten point one percent inflation, that's how, for a finance person, that's very pretty. We love that. Um, because we've got our expenditures covered by our revenue. But you can see from 2022 to 2023, that gray line, um, skyrockets up, uh, and creating a gap over that yellow line, uh, which is not growing at the same pace. And one of the reasons it does not grow at the same pace is that our, uh, property tax revenue is our main, uh, largest revenue source. And that is capped at one percent, uh, growth, uh, per year at a maximum. So when costs are rising at, you know, ten percent, five percent per year and property tax revenue grows at one percent, well, it can't keep up. So what would the, um, levy funds pay for? So this is a, um, sorry, property tax levy lid lift. And I mentioned that one percent cap. So, um, a voting majority, a simple majority of fifty percent plus one can vote, uh, to increase, uh, to allow the city to go over that one percent increase. Uh, the rest of the slide here is mainly staff recommendations. Uh, so we reached out to police, um, and the public safety departments. What, what would you do if, you know, we had extra funding? And so this is staff recommendations, not something that, um, the council has adopted at this time. Um, but it's possible that we can retain, uh, positions currently funded with one-time funding, which is, uh, two patrol officers, crisis response specialists and crime analysts. Uh, those positions are funded right now with, uh, funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. And those funds will run out at the end of this year. And then we can also add additional positions. So we can keep those positions, possibly add additional positions of four new patrol officers and one new community service officer. And the estimated increase of funds that, uh, Proposition One could provide if it were to pass, uh, is an estimated increase between two point six and three million dollars. Another question we've gotten, is this going to be like last time? And then I had a slide that was just a big, bold no, but I took that out. Um, but, I mean, it's, we joke, I joke, but even though that's eighteen years ago, I think there's still scars in the community over, uh, that last lid lift. And not only in the community, but also probably within the police department among people who were there at the time. Um, so in two thousand and six, uh, the lift was from, uh, I think a dollar eighteen per thousand of assessed value and, uh, the request was for a dollar sixty. Uh, in 2024, we're at ninety cents, uh, per thousand, uh, asking for a dollar forty. Uh, and the reason for the angst, uh, with the levy lid lift last time is it was temporary. Um, so the city raised funds, hired cops. It, the lid lift expired, they went back to square one, laid off cops. Uh, in 2024, uh, we would make it permanent so that we would not hire cops and then lay them off a few years later, being back to square one in the same situation that, you know, we're in now. Uh, in two thousand and six, uh, it was a multi-year, five, uh, so they had five years where they exceeded the one percent cap. In 2024, uh, our proposition one, uh, is requesting a single year. So the first year, it would exceed the one percent and then it would only increase by one percent thereafter. Um, in two thousand and six, now this isn't part of the proposition, but this would be a difference in approach, uh, by the city. Uh, which two thousand and six, there was no designated fund for the levy proceeds. Uh, and I think that led to, um, feelings of a lack of transparency at the time. Uh, in 2024, uh, we would establish a special revenue fund for levy funds and proceeds so we'd have transparent, uh, financial reporting. So those funds would be separated from the general fund, but then reimburse the general fund for a cost related to public safety. Okay, another question is, why doesn't the city scrub the budget? Uh, and for the 2024 budget, uh, we did reduce, uh, budgets, uh, for services and supplies. Uh, so we went through, we looked at accounts that, uh, at the time had not been used up, used, uh, had been underutilized. And so we reduced budgets, uh, on that. And so we were bringing the expenditures and revenues closer together. Um, we strategically managed vacancies, uh, to reduce personnel costs. So, uh, this year, when we've got an open position, you know, it's possible we've waited three months to fill. So we, we, uh, leave it open so that we can save money and then, you know, strategically, when we really need to fill it, we fill it. So we're, we haven't been filling vacancies just right off the bat for everyone that we have. Um, part of the budget process this year, heading into the next budget, is reviewing fee schedules and revenue opportunities. Uh, this week, we began meeting with departments, uh, on the budget. And that's one of the topics that's going to be discussed with every, um, department is, you know, what are your fees? You know, especially for charges for, you know, services we provide. Um, are they appropriate fees? Um, council, uh, through the hiring process, uh, looking for the new city manager, uh, reduced the hiring pay range, uh, for the city manager that's going to be hired. And also a commitment to a balanced budget. Uh, so this year, we are, as I mentioned, uh, doing our best to align revenues and expenditures so that we don't have a, a gap between the two, uh, in the next biennium. And then, uh, just as a reminder, the purpose of Proposition One is to preserve and to add to current levels of public safety and insulate public safety from budget cuts. So the purpose isn't to solve all the city's general fund, uh, budget issues. It's really, if it were to pass, then we would not have public safety, you know, and police under the, the budget, budget-cutting knife. Okay, next one is why are taxpayers paying for the Marina parking system? The only taxpayers contributing to the cost of the Marina parking system are construction companies with projects in the city valued at fifteen million dollars or more. So it's paid for with, uh, one-time sales tax. And then taxpayers who use the parking system. Because the proceeds from the parking system, at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, go to pay the bonds that installed the parking system. So really, it's those construction companies and taxpayers who are using it. Speaking of the bonds, what about the bonds? Uh, bond proceeds can only be expended on projects designated to receive the proceeds. Bond payments are made by the Marina and Capital Projects Funds, not by the general fund. Proposition One asks the public, uh, for additional funding for public safety. Public safety departments, such as the police department, reside in the general fund. I think, uh, there's a member of the community made a comment about, well, when we were issuing bonds, you know, the bond ratings said, oh, well, we have a strong financial position. But then we turn around and say, well, no, we don't. Um, and the reason for that is not just a little bit of, of a timing issue, but when we're being judged for the bonds, they're looking at the city as a whole. But what we're doing with public safety is we're only looking at the general fund. And that's really the piece, uh, that's struggling the most. And the way to think about this is, these are the different types of funds the city has. So there's a general fund where the day-to-day operations, uh, are paid for. Um, that's where we have some unrestricted money, if we have money, usually. Uh, then there's special revenue funds where those funds, like a lodging tax, can only be spent certain ways and they're usually restricted. Debt service funds, where we pay debt. Capital projects funds that finance the capital projects. Enterprise funds are the surface water. And the Marina, they run like businesses. And then internal service funds that provide services to other departments in the city. So what we have here is public safety is in the general fund. And the bonds are in the capital projects fund. So the capital project funds, they receive the bond proceeds, they spend the money, it has nothing to do with the general fund. The public safety, which is what we're concerned about funding, lives entirely in the general fund. Uh, and that's the fund that really has the budget issue with the expenditures. Well, I mean, they all have been affected by inflation, but our concern with public safety is centered on the general fund. Another question, and we had someone come in very agitated to City Hall last week. Why are there two Proposition Ones? They were not happy about this and were not happy with signs in the city. Um, but the answer to the question is, South King Fire and Rescue and the City of Des Moines each have a Proposition One on the ballot. Proposition One from South King Fire seeks to reduce their property tax rate by fifty cents, uh, per thousand of assessed value and authorize a fire benefits charge. So Proposition One, uh, what is the effect of my property tax bill? Proposition One seeks to increase the city's property tax rate to a dollar forty per thousand of assessed value. And this is about a fifty cent increase from the current rate. So if you have a million-dollar house, that's about, um, nearly five hundred dollars more a year. Uh, if you have a six hundred thousand dollar house, uh, then the increase is about two hundred and ninety-eight dollars per year on your property tax bill. Okay, what if both propositions pass? Then the City of Des Moines, which is about seven point six nine percent of your property tax bill, uh, the rate would go up fifty cents. If, uh, the other Proposition One also passes, uh, for South King Fire, then it would, your property tax bill rate would go down fifty cents. And so it would be a wash and you'd have to pay a, a separate fire benefit charge. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Uh, do we have any questions for Jeff in regard to this presentation? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Jeff, I noticed when you were talking about two thousand and six, um, you know, the rate was a dollar sixty, way beyond anything we're asking for. Historically, what has that assessment rate been? And how does what we're asking for compare, uh, historically to what people have been paying in, I don't know, the last ten years plus?
Okay, um, so the last ten years, what has happened is assessed value has, since twenty fourteen, has more than doubled. And as I mentioned, property tax, uh, collections can only increase one percent per year. So what's happened is the rate has gone from a dollar sixty-five in twenty fourteen, uh, down to ninety cents, uh, ten years later, as, you know, the assessed value is, has more than doubled. Uh, so, um, back in two thousand and six, yeah, they, they requested a dollar sixty. Um, and now the city is requesting a dollar forty, which is less than it was, uh, ten years ago.
And on the, um, the questions that were asked about the bonds, bonds have to be repaid.
Yep.
Where does that money come from? And does it have any impact on either the general fund or, uh, the levy lid increase that's going to be in a separate, uh, fund? That, that'll be transparent?
So the, the capital projects funds that make the bond payments on the bonds that were issued last year are, uh, the real estate excise tax, uh, funds, which those are restricted to be used on capital projects. Uh, parking, proceeds from the parking system, which is, um, about two hundred and fifty thousand and then also a little bit of one-time sales tax money. So those are the primary sources for the payment. And the Marina pays their share for the dock replacement. Um, and the second part of your question is sort of the, oh, oh, the impact on the general fund.
The, the funds that would be...
Yeah, so it, it has no impact on the general fund whatsoever.
And then lastly, I mean, we've been, I saw some numbers last week that, um, the Redondo Speed Cameras have raised about thirty-five thousand dollars in their first month. Can that be spent on police?
Uh, that can be spent on traffic safety, I believe, and it's, um, Tim might have a little bit more precise answer, but, um, basically safe sidewalks. Um, and also can be used on costs for whatever is incurred by the system as far as installation, processing the tickets, et cetera. But it's, it's heavily restricted. Um, so it's not something we can just throw into the general fund.
That's correct. We can't use it for police officers.
Right.
We cannot. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
So, in a typical dollar of property tax currently, how much of that actually goes to the city?
About eight cents.
About eight cents.
Seven and a half, eight cents.
And should this levy pass, what would that be? And should this levy pass, what would that be? Would that translate to a change of a dollar of property tax?
I might have misspoke there. I was thinking of the pie, in that we represent 7.69%. Well, no, that'd still work out if it was a dollar. Sorry, I just, the math.
I'm just doing it in simpler terms than a thousand.
Right, so, can you repeat the question?
So, would the levy pass, if you were considering a dollar, would it be like 13 cents, 14 cents? What would it be?
You're making me do math in my head. I need my spreadsheet. So if it's 50 cents, it would be closer to 13 cents.
So 13 cents, so we're talking about a four or five-cent difference.
Correct.
So obviously, there's been some information out there that we're raising property taxes as a whole 57%.
Right.
But that would not be correct. We're raising our city's portion, but it's a matter of pennies.
That's correct. We're not, yeah, it is limited to our 7.69% share of the pie. It's not all of local taxes or all of property taxes.
Because, because, can you talk about, just really quick, what are some of the other taxes that are involved in property tax? The larger ones and what their percentages kind of average out to be?
Yeah, so a property tax bill is made up of taxes from different taxing districts. So when you look at your property tax bill, you'll see Washington State Schools, you'll see your library, you'll see fire. And those tend to be the larger ones than your city taxes, at least here. So that, I think, in a Des Moines property tax bill, the city would rank about fifth on that list, behind library and schools. Really, the schools are a huge portion of it. There's probably 35, 40%, where we're about 7.69%.
Okay. Currently, how much of our budget goes to public safety and the General Fund?
About 55%.
About 55%. And this analysis to add the officers and maintain some of the others, was that a number that was several, you used city staff and other folks to determine what your need is and worked with the Police Department and the Police Guild?
Right, so a lot of the consultation I had, well, me personally, was, how much does an officer cost? So we figured an average cost of a police officer with salary and benefits, with equipment and with training, was about $215,000 per officer, on average.
Okay. That's, that's quite a bit for an officer in this day and age. And you said that's, that's the officer, their benefits, their training, their vehicle, and other equipment, correct?
Yes. I am sure if the car was included in that. But their equipment that they have, like their bullet vests and all the gear and...
I think that, yeah, the vehicles are in addition to that. So we're probably talking approximately $275,000, $300,000 for an officer, when you add the vehicle?
Right, yeah. A vehicle nowadays for police probably costs at least $100,000 once you buy, purchase the vehicle and outfit it with everything it needs.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Jeff. To your slide, is this going to be like last time? You say in 2006, no designated fund for levy proceeds. Are you saying there was no ordinance segregating the money into that? Or are you saying there was like no, just, you know, GL account set aside?
There's no special, we would create a special revenue fund, and there wasn't one at that time. So it went into the General Fund directly.
Okay, but, but, I mean, would your intent, is it the administration's intent to bring some form of ordinance forward to, you know, make that, designate that account?
Yes.
Okay, and the other thing, and I'm putting you on the spot, you know, you said you like to have a... It is my understanding that the levy rate is based on the property values. We really only raise the amount that we ask, we ask the assessor for a dollar amount, okay, every year. And then you go through this Rube Goldberg thing, which derives a rate, okay? I'm, if I'm oversimplifying, I'm just, because I think people think that, oh, our rate was 160 then, and then it went down to, but it went down to 90, correct me here, because basically, everybody's property value went through the roof in the 2010s.
Having seen the county forms, I have to fill out, I think Rube Goldberg is an accurate description. But you're correct, so...
And you're old enough to get that reference, so thank you, thank you for that.
I, with, the way, yeah, you're correct. So that's why, in the past, as we've talked about this, we've described it as, it's more of an art than science because we can collect 1% over what we collected the year before. But let's say housing values, property values just tank. Well, then that rate would be higher than it would be if it continued to climb.
Yeah, I just, the whole rate thing, it makes it appear like somehow they were stiffing people back in 2006, and we've been ever so much more generous, you know? And it's almost, you know, it's like, it's wonderful to be able to take credit for it. But, okay, thanks, that's all I got.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, you stated that one of the purposes of Proposition One is to preserve and add to current levels of public safety and to insulate the public safety from budget cuts. And I believe you said that the public safety now represents 55% of the budget?
Correct.
Okay, so, previously, numbers have been released that have shown that even with the levy lid lift, we're showing deficits, we're forecasting deficits over the next four, five years, correct?
That would be true in the case that we have provided funding for public safety, yet other departments or other parts of the General Fund, we have not resolved those budget issues. And so if things were, the forecast that we did were, if things were exactly the same as they've been, then the effect of the levy lid lift just itself would delay the General Fund from having a negative fund balance for about a year. So it would push that out from 2026 to 2027. But as the city would work on the other budget issues, which are not a part of the discussion, but are being worked on through the budget process, then that, along with a levy lid lift, if it were to pass, that would, we'd have all the pieces together to align the expenditures and revenue. And then our forecast probably wouldn't go at, hopefully wouldn't go negative at all. But at least it would be pushed out, if that makes sense. Does that...
Yes, the short answer, though, is yes.
Okay, so we're looking at, our, the real bugaboo we've got here is the fact that the 1% that we're allowed to increase the property taxes every year does not keep up with the rate of inflation. So we're still, even if this passes, then we're still continually going in the hole again.
Well, I guess what I would say is, if this passes, just like the chart says here, we won't be making cuts in public safety. We still have to make cuts elsewhere.
Correct.
If it doesn't pass, we're going to be cutting across the board.
Okay.
So there, we have to make cuts in other departments. And we specifically didn't do a general government lid lift. So we're only, we're only asking the public to support the public safety piece. There will be cuts in other departments moving into next year. And that's the process that we're working on now. We're talking, you know, with the Finance Committee, and we'll be bringing those forward as we move along in the budget process. So the question is, is after August 6th, we'll be able to, we'll be able to know, hey, are we cutting police, or are we not cutting police? And that's the outcome of this lid lift. There will be cuts elsewhere.
Okay, and, but this is my point, is that, okay. So in successive years, if you're still having to make cuts, because we're still, we're projecting deficits as they go on out, the 45% of the budget, those impacts are going to come on the 45% of the budget that is not police. So, so to me, it seems like, okay, we're working ourselves into a hole here, that even if we do pass this, that our problem is we need revenue. It's not, it's not a question that we can cut our, you know, way to prosperity here, or even solvency. So it seems, to me, you know, it seems that we need to be addressing more our needs for revenue.
Yeah, so this is one tool. And we're looking at revenue options, we're looking at budget cuts, we're looking at everything. And part of that is why the council created the Finance Committee. We have a number of ideas moving forward. This is one piece. And so we have other pieces that we'll be bringing forward, but this is one of them, and this is a very important one.
But, okay, forgive me for getting nervous here, but, okay. Approve this piece, and we'll bring something else forward. But you have to look at this thing in a global, a global, look at it holistically. The thing is, we don't know what these other proposals are that you're going to come forward.
Well, holistically is the budget. And we're starting the budget process now. At the next study session, we're going to have our budget retreat. So we'll be presenting, because, starting back in January, we saw, we had these projections. So we've been working as a staff on balancing the budget for not only 2025, but now that we have a biennial budget, we have to look at 2026, and then we also look at our five-year budget. So these are all things that we've been looking at. This is one piece that the council approved to put on the ballot, which will provide support for public safety. There's other pieces that we'll be discussing at the, at the September budget retreat that we've known about. We know we have to address this. And this is one piece. And we'll be bringing the other pieces forward as we, as we prepare the budget. Because what we have to do is provide a balanced budget for 2025 and 2026. And we have to have that passed by the council by the end of the year. So it's not something that we're saying we'll bring forward at some future date. We will have that, presenting it, starting in September and moving forward.
So we're, okay, I yield at this point.
Councilmember Harris.
Councilmember Oxiger, your points are all very well taken, but you'll notice that I was...
I just want to say, it can't be a conversation, so go ahead and speak to the...
A small amount of grace, please. Basically, I looked at this sort of like, you know how you have a public hearing, and then you have questions only? And this was supposed to be an FAQ thing? And so I did not tear this thing apart, because I don't think it's appropriate. And I would just suggest that we just leave it here. I think we're veering dangerously into a political discussion. And it's the city's job to try to sell this, you know, okay, fair. But I just, I just think we should just stop, quit while we're ahead. That's just my thing, so.
Okay, thank you. I do kind of want to agree with the council member here. If you've got questions for Jeff, that's good. But any more commentary to the discussions? I want to keep this to questions, not discussions. So if you've got a question for Jeff, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Isn't it part of the city's job to provide public safety?
That's correct.
Is it even possible, at this point in the annual budget cycle, soon to be a biannual budget cycle, to have a comprehensive budget produced at this point?
No, that's, most cities right now, who are on the same cycle as we are, biennial, are most likely meeting with departments just to find out what their requests are. After that, then we get into the numbers and see how we can get it balanced.
If we were to wait and try to do something later in...
So, Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, it really is, I would like, just, do you need clarity on the slides?
What the impact would be if we don't do something with the levy?
And the city manager was very clear, and he was, I just, I really do would like to, I really would like to just keep it to questions and clarity on the slides. They did a good job. Do you have any, need any clarity?
No.
All right, thank you. All right. If you have no further questions, the Finance Director? Okay, and I do want to check with Yoshiko, are you still hearing us well?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I would like to take a five-minute recess. So we will resume at about, at 7:12. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's please return to our seats. We'll resume in just a moment. Tara, do I need to save the time? Resume? We're back. Okay, ready? Tell me when. We are now back in session, and we are still in the middle of the city manager's report. And I'm going to hand it over to City Manager Tim George, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the last item on my report. This is going to be a city manager improvement update, and I will hand it over to our assistant city manager, Adrian Johnson Newton.
Good evening, council, members of the public and staff. My name is A.J. Johnson Newton, and I am the Assistant City Manager. And I'm here to provide an update on the city manager recruitment. We are at the point where the council is ready to make their selections for the finalists. It has been a lengthy journey, but I'm thrilled to be at this point. This is what we've all been waiting for. Next slide, please. So you will see here that I just recapped the steps that we've taken. Each time I come up to council, I just sort of highlight where we are in the process, so the public can follow along. The thing that I'd like to draw your attention to are the items in red. So the last time we met, the recruitment had closed on June 30th. We ended up with 29 applicants that applied. The council selected 13 semifinalists to respond to 20 written supplemental questions and four online self-interview questions, which, if you didn't watch the last meeting where I was up at the dais, the candidates were given four questions to respond to. They recorded themselves and provided that back to the council. So out of the 13, 11 of the candidates provided the requested supplemental materials, and that was submitted to the council. I believe it was on July 17th or 18th, excuse me if I have the date wrong. Next slide, please. Okay, so before we dive into the details of the purpose of why I'm up here at the podium tonight, I just want to draw your attention to three important dates that are coming up. So July 30th, we will be in executive session, and the council will select the finalists, who will move on to the next phase. On August 1st, 2024, we have a council meeting, actually a study session, so I just want to point that out. I will present a proposed interview process and suggested interview dates for the council's review and consideration. And then I will be back up at the podium on August 8th at the council meeting, asking for final guidance on the interview process. Next slide, please. Okay. So one of the things we want to talk about here tonight is how the council is going to whittle down the 11 semifinalists to hopefully three to five finalists that will be invited for an onsite interview. And so the proposed process, and what I'll be asking for some feedback from the council tonight, is as I laid out up here. So basically, the city council will use a scoring key and a candidate evaluation form to assess the candidates based on evaluation criteria that's going to be selected by the council. We will go through that shortly. Final scores, as proposed, will provide a structured overview of each candidate's strengths and areas for improvement, but they do not have to be a basis for the selection. And instead, the council can elect to use these scores as a tool to help them collectively identify the top candidates who best meet the criteria and are most suited for advancement to the next stage of the selection process. So basically, what I'm saying, in layman's terms, is that what I'm proposing to the council now is to use a scoring key, evaluate the candidates based on the evaluation criteria that they're going to pick tonight, and then we can tally up the score. The council can use the final score to arrange the candidates, and then they could have discussion about the people that they'd like to move forward for the finalists. Next slide, please. Nope, one back, yep, thank you. That's what's proposed. And so what I'm at, my first question for the council tonight is, do they want to move forward with the proposal, which basically you would use the scoring as a tool to identify the top candidates and then have additional discussion to finalize your choices? Or did you want to use the scoring as the deciding factor? So in other words, we would still go through the same process. You would evaluate each of the candidates against the evaluation criteria that you're going to select tonight. You would assign a score, and then whoever had the, the top highest five scores, or three, whatever, however that worked out at the end, those would be the people that would be moving forward to the next phase. So that's my first question for the council.
All right, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, A.J., I'm just a little unclear, are these, the scoring tool would apply to how I'm individually rating the candidates, and therefore would allow me to identify my top three or five? Or are we talking about a cumulative process where everybody is going into, can you...
Yeah, yeah, sorry, it's a little hard, because we don't have the scoring sheet yet. I didn't want to design it until I had some, some feedback. So basically, what I'm envisioning is that during exec session, you, the council would run through the 11 candidates, and each of the council members would assign a score in the meeting based on the criteria, and, and I would input that information. And at the end, there would be a final score from each of the council members. And so what I'm proposing is to basically then organize the candidates to the top three or five who have the highest scores. And then the council could use that just as a tool, meaning you could have some additional discussion. You don't have to have the score as the final determiner of who would move forward. Or if the council prefers, same process, but once I get the three to five organized, once the council decides how many people they want to bring on board, you could just select the top three or five. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I mean, there's a lot of information here to go through, and I'm looking for something to kind of help me organize my thoughts on it before we're in a, in a group discussion about that. Is there a way to use this proposed tool beforehand? Or it doesn't sound like, because it doesn't sound like we will have that tool until we get into executive session. Is that...
I can provide the tool to council tomorrow, once I understand, or once we have agreement on what the evaluation criteria are, because I have established some. So we're not starting completely from scratch. So I have some things to present to council after we establish this question. So I could give you the tool on Friday via email, and you could use it just to do it as an individual. So then you're prepared on, on Tuesday to, you know, provide your scoring. So that's fine, if, if that is the council's preference. I have no problem, as long as you're okay with giving me sort of till the end of the day tomorrow to get the tool over to you. I think the question that I'm asking is just in exec session, how do you guys want to determine who the finalists will be? Do you want to use the scores to basically identify the discussion about the candidates? Or do you want to use the score to identify the candidates, period, point blank?
I, okay. In answer to your question, I would really favor to identify the candidates so that we can talk about them, not that it's the decider, that we're just putting numbers, and, and the numbers that come out on top are the ones we're talking to. I, I don't, I wouldn't want to do that. But I would be gracious, graciously appreciative if there was a way to get a tool out to us on Friday.
Yeah, I can commit to that.
So two quick questions. Could you just send that out to everybody? We don't have to use it, but then you don't have to ask everybody individually.
Yeah, I will.
Hey, good. Second question, if we already agree with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, we can move to the next thing. But it all depends, how many of you feel that way? Agree with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz? Got one nod, two nods, this nod, I'm nod? You're going to ask a question? Do you know how you feel, councilmember? Okay, and, well, and then I'll ask Yoshiko in a moment, too. Go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
I'm sorry, I may be, you know, having this because of the property tax thing and so on. So I still don't understand the one or two. You know, you opened up with this thing, and then we kind of went off. So could you repeat your initial thing? Yeah, what is the basic two choices?
Tara, can you advance to the next slide? This might be helpful. Okay, so this is the scoring key matrix, right? And so what we're going to do tonight is evaluate, or establish, excuse me, wrong word, establish the evaluation criteria that you guys will want to use to be able to identify your candidates. So for example, one of them is relevant experience, okay? And so what the council would do as individuals, and if you elect to do that, because I send you the tool on Friday, but basically at the meeting, is you would take candidate one, and I would say relevant experience...
One through five.
One through five. And each of you would give your score, I would input it, and we would go through all of the evaluation criteria.
So, so these are the evaluation criteria?
Yeah, that one. That's okay.
No, I mean, this is the thing, and I would just go around, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm seriously old. And so it's like, and we would go one, three, four, two, okay, right? And, and then, and then you would, you know, put this into a spreadsheet, and the options are either that we, we do them ahead of the executive, no?
That is an option, but it's not one that I'm asking about tonight. My question is, and you explained the process. So say at exec session, we go through each of the candidates, and each council member assigns a score based on the evaluation criteria. So just for my example, let's say there's three candidates, one's 30, 25, and 24, if you arrange the scores, after everyone's given their input. So my question to the council is, for those three candidates that rose to the top based on the score, are those the people you want to move forward as finalists? Or do you want to center the discussion around whether those are the, in other words, use it as a tool? Because there may be, let's say, Mayor Buxton, maybe her preferred candidate had a score where it puts them as number seven. But she feels really strongly about the fact that there's things in their materials that she would like to bring forward to maybe have the council evaluate and maybe move them into the top three or five. So either you can use the score as the final determiner, or just to sort of center the discussion around the top, you know, five, six, or seven, and then the council can try to come to a consensus, basically, right?
Okay, okay, so, so please, just indulge me one, one more moment here. So basically, what you're saying is that, and without, like, you know, divulging the skull and bones secrecy of the thing, we go into this room, you know, they shut the curtains, and, and then we all in real time write this stuff down for the 11 people, okay? And then one of the options would be to have a discussion, or... I'm struggling to understand, first of all, that's going to take a lot of, that's going to take a significant amount of time just doing that for 11 people, and, and, and then you have the discussion, and, I mean, that seems, that's going to take a lot of time, don't you think?
Well, one of the ways to get ahead of that would be what Deputy Mayor Steinmetz suggested, which is for me to give you the evaluation criteria, and you could evaluate ahead of time. I don't think there's anything on the evaluation criteria, as I've designed it now, that the council members haven't already probably considered when you're running through the candidates and who your, your top choices are. I mean, they're, and when we go through them, I think it'll make sense, like their educational background, their experience. So there's, there's not things, I think, that should require a ton of thought from the council, but I do think, based on Deputy Mayor Steinmetz's request to have the evaluation tool, that will probably address your question about time.
Okay, well, so, and then what is the other option? I'm, I'm sorry, but, so if, what, yeah, what is the second option?
Could I, could I give a shot at it, please? So one option is go by the numbers on the spreadsheet only, no talking. The second option is go by the numbers and talking.
Okay, well...
Does that make sense?
Right, or, or we could just talk about each of the 11 candidates, write down the numbers, and then hand the numbers in, and, you know, whoever wins.
That's the numbers only? You just have, when you're talking first?
I have, okay, so I have one other question, based on we, our discussion. And I just want you to, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. It sounded to me like the numbers that you, when you sent us, when you came up with the list, that there was some consensus based on the scoring. You know, in, in other words, the people who there seemed to be most agreement on rose to the top? Or am I overstating that?
Yes, but it was much more simplified, right? Because the council made their decision on an abbreviated version of the resume, and, you know, whatever the consultant picked out. And it really was, yes, move them forward, maybe move them forward, or, or no. So to answer your question, there were some candidates in the scoring that generally it was like, yes, move them forward, or yes, move them forward. Yeah, so in terms of agreement, that was generally what I saw in some of the top candidates.
How does the tool differ from this? I mean, isn't this the criteria?
Well, what you have now is responses to 20 written supplemental questions that reveal much more about the candidate than you've had in the past. You have the ability to assess their communication skills, as an example. You have the ability to see what their experience is with community engagement. Let's see, what else did I have?
But this is like 30 things on this. Is that, I mean, we're going to, we're going to score 30 things?
Unless you chop down the list. I guess the, the main point is that the council needs the ability, I think Deputy Mayor Steinmetz said this, there's a lot of information to evaluate. And so as a collective and the hiring authority, the intent is to get you guys all on the same page so that you are evaluating in the same manner. Right? Because things that may be more import, may be important to you may not be as important to maybe Mayor Buxton. I'm just going to pick on you two, because you're right here. So this is just a way to approach the candidates through the same lens. You don't have to score the same, but basically what the evaluation criteria does, whether it's 50 or 15, whatever the council decides, is say, these are the attributes, the knowledge, the skills, and abilities that are important to the position, and what we could determine from the materials.
But it's 300 scores, it's 30 times 11, and then we have a discussion. And so, okay, I think I'm done, thank you.
So then I guess I just need to know if you want to have the discussion with the scores, or just the scores?
I think it was discussion, 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 and discussion for you, Councilmember Oxiger?
I, I am strongly scores.
Okay, scores only. And Yoshiko, did you feel like you kind of understood the conversation here?
Yes, I believe so. I just have the criteria to hand out in front of me, and I'm not able to see the 30 items that Councilmember Harris is discussing. But I do believe that there are items that, there's judgment and subjectivity that goes into it, so conversation would be warranted. And I think if people want to do their scoring in advance and bring that, that would be fine. And if you don't, then don't. But I'm on the favor of more discussion, not just the straight vote.
Okay, good. It sounds like you have some direction there, A.J., thank you. What, we didn't vote, we just go...
No, 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 but, but, but I thought the two options, that the scoring would be done in executive session.
That's right, but you can take notes ahead of time off of your, you can bring this in with you. That was the point of having the criteria handed to us ahead of time to help us do our homework before we get there? Does that make sense?
Okay, so, thank you.
Okay, hopefully. All right, all right. I think we can move forward.
Okay, and I was gonna offer, Councilmember Harris, if we need to have additional discussion tomorrow, you can give me a call. So, just to walk through it if there's still some confusion. Next slide, please. Okay, so next is the proposed evaluation criteria. Okay, so a couple notes about the evaluation criteria. All of these things are, all of these, either knowledge, skills, abilities, or things that are important to the role, is information that the council could have gleaned from the written supplemental materials that were provided. So in other words, there's nothing on here that you would not be able to assess based on their response to the supplemental questions and/or the interview. So I'm not asking the council to evaluate anything you wouldn't know about, right? You should be able, based on the materials that the candidate submitted, and I went through a few times, to be able to address and score all of these attributes. And so basically, what I'm asking the council tonight is either, one, are there things that you want off the list? Two, things you want on the list, or any clarification that I need to add? So just to run through this, first, we talked, mentioning educational background and professional experience. So obviously, their educational background, their achievements, their professional development, continuous learning, all of that you should be able to get from their resume. And there are some questions that I think distinctly, distinctly get at that. Their relevant experience, you know, their municipal government experience, the leadership roles they've held in senior leadership positions, and intergovernmental relationships. So their experience working with other agencies. Oh, sorry, I'm not the mayor.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just one field that I would like to see included in there is Washington State experience, and possibly experience in, that's the right way, and I'm just trying to frame it, with a marina or a waterside city.
Waterfront community.
I have a saying in HR, if you just give me the thought, I'll HR it up, so.
I believe that you do.
Yeah, so geographic experience, in other words, in Washington State, and then a marina or some sort of public service municipal facility that they have experience managing, something like that. Got it?
Councilmember Harris.
Enthusiasm.
I think I do have that down there. Yeah, I do, yep.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll point it out when we get there.
Point of clarification, I thought we were taking each bold heading one at a time.
It would be easier for me to take notes. So yeah, so right now, in terms of the background of the candidate and their professional experience, these are the things that I've called out that I believe that you guys would be able to determine from the materials that they submitted to you.
Sorry, it took me a while. Candidate interest, that's not what I mean. I mean enthusiasm to come to Des Moines and do this job. I think that's different.
Okay.
I mean, if you disagree, please, please.
Order, can we take these one at a, these big subheadings one at a time? So that it's clear what we're talking about, at what particular point? It's not any valid point that he's making, it just.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Any, so go ahead, anything more on educational background and professional experience? Does somebody want a different, another bullet point there, or one removed? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So leadership and management skills, so their ability to deal with change management. And I have some, a description of what that would look like, how they approach decision-making, strategic planning, their experience leading and motivating and managing teams. There were questions about this that they responded to in their supplemental responses. Adaptability and flexibility, their vision and innovation, and their ability to deal with conflict, or being able to facilitate a mutually satisfying outcome. Is there anything else potentially that I might have missed underneath that larger heading that the council would like to include? Okay. Next, which I think is of pretty much huge importance to the council, is financial and operational acumen. So their experience in developing, managing, and overseeing budgets, their financial oversight that they have done in their previous experience, operational efficiency, project management, what complex municipal projects they might have oversaw. And personnel management, there are some questions also in the written supplemental that talks about recruitment selection, their experience working with labor groups.
So I did want to ask, could, will you be, could you send a copy of this to Yoshiko after the meeting also? And then would you be open? So Yoshiko, you're kind of getting the idea of what we're doing here, correct?
Yes, and I did receive a copy.
Oh, you did?
Thank you very much.
Perfect, okay, then. So Yoshiko would be able to, if she had any input tonight or tomorrow, she could send it to you?
Yeah, I would just need it probably by noon so I could make sure that I get it out to you guys before I go home for the.
Did you catch that?
By noon, by noon, yes.
Excuse me, Councilmember Grace Matsui. I'm sorry, I keep calling you Yoshiko. All right, thank you. Keep going. Oh, questions, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yep, maybe you're seeing this subsumed in what you've said, but the sheer numbers, the size of the budgets that they've been responsible for, and the number of employees that they actually have supervised, I think should be part of the consideration here.
You're a natural, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Anything else? Okay, next up is communication skills. As we know, that you guys got 20 written responses. So their ability to be clear, excuse me, clear, concise, and have an effective presentation of their ideas. You have links to their online self-interviews, so you do have at least a sample of their ability to do public speaking. There are some questions in there that talk about their ability to sort of adjust their communication style to the audience, so I included that. Open communication, there are some questions, I think, that, depending on how the candidates responded, really should have some information about their ability, and their ability to be open, and the importance that they place on transparent communication, community engagement. That's another thing, I think, that's sort of addressed all through the questions, that the council should be able to get a sense, at least, of their experience with community engagement. And then the collaboration, I think there's probably one direct question, at least, about their ability to collaborate with different types of stakeholders. So if there is anything else in communication that the council would like to see addressed?
Yoshiko, anything? Excuse me, Councilmember.
I think I will, thank you. I will wait till the last section for additional evaluation criteria.
All right, great, thank you.
And then the additional evaluation criteria is kind of like the miscellaneous, please. I really couldn't think of like a big subheader. So their ability to problem solve, how they approach decisions, their leadership and integrity, I think there are some questions about their background and things that they may or may not show up in the media searches, research and knowledge. What did they show that the council, that they know about the city? What sort of research have they done about the position? And did they demonstrate that in their materials, their political acumen? And then the candidate interest. And so, Councilmember Harris, this is where I would have put your suggestion about enthusiasm. I did, that is part of that bullet point, but if you want something beyond that, I can try to rework it as its own attribute.
Again, I, thank you. I think that enthusiasm for this particular position, in going through them, some people showed far more obvious interest and had done obvious research about this place. And other, you know, the other applications sounded far more generic. They were just, you know, they were one of their possible things.
So then, in candidate interest, as I have the criteria written, basically what I'm saying is that through their responses, they demonstrated that their career goals and their values align with the position objectives, so the things that are important?
You know, if that's, you know.
Right, and.
I'm just telling you internally, that is, that will resonate with me. So if you want to leave it as it is, that's totally fine. Thank you.
I just wanted to finish my point, just because other people may still be following your line of thinking. And then the rest of the candidate interest is the demonstrates enthusiasm, motivation, and eagerness to contribute. So then you would take that one through five, right? So like you said, there are some candidates that demonstrated at least more attention and to understanding the city, and was able to sort of, the words jumped off the paper in response to the fact that they seemed to genuinely want the position. So maybe that candidate would be a five, right? Compared to someone that seemed like it was just a form letter. You may rate them two, so.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, kind of dovetailing into that idea. To me, it's enthusiasm for Des Moines. It's not just, are they a great writer who can, you know, put a lot of enthusiasm in a letter? It's enthusiasm for Des Moines that would matter a lot to me that would get somebody to a five. And maybe that's where the, this criteria could be expanded a little bit, or.
Or that became, to use your example, the, to your point, it may be this feels like a form letter, maybe that's a two. Yeah, you seem like you want a city manager job, right? Maybe the next candidate wants a city manager role at Des Moines, but didn't throughout the rest of the document, didn't really demonstrate that they did a lot of research on our city. But, you know, maybe that, that's my, maybe that's a three. And then to your point, maybe it was like, hey, gung ho all in on Des Moines, did their research, you know, really sort of demonstrates all through their responses about wanting this job at this city. That would be a five. And so my question now is, is there anything that, oh, sorry, I apologize.
Maybe you could just put at the end of eagerness to contribute to Des Moines.
Yeah, I mean, thank you.
You did, all right, good, good, thanks. Keep going.
And so I guess, is there anything that I missed now that we've went through the entire list that we need to clean up, add, take off?
Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, could we add awareness and commitment to the hierarchy?
We can add, I would like to just do one caveat, I'll make a note, is I'd like to go back and just see what they responded to make sure that you would be able to assess, right? That they have the commitment to the, who does what, basically, right? What their role is, what the council's role is. So as long as I can find a way that you could evaluate that through their responses, I will add that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
So stepping back, you know, there's this thing about intergovernmental relations, which sounds swell, but basically, I want somebody who knows what a Part 150 is, or who knows what NPDES or a shoreline map. I want somebody who knows specifically about EPA and FAA stuff. So somebody who would have background with that federal level, which is, you know, quite a different thing from, let's say, working with counties and so forth. So, yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, I think I can, because there were people who responded to that, so we can, I can pull that out, so you can assess that.
It's just a different level of acumen. Okay, yeah, thanks.
Any other?
Councilmember Grace Matsui, did she, she said she wanted to wait till.
She said she'll get back to you, yeah, after the meeting, you know, tonight or tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, if there's nothing else, back to the slides. Next slide, please. All right, that's all I have.
Any further questions or need of clarity on anything before we go to the next thing? No? Councilmember Grace Matsui, any closing questions or input?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to send some comments at the email.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is, we have our consent calendar, and could the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, administrative office of courts reimbursement agreement. Item four, draft resolution 24-064 in support of Marina charging floats grant application. Item five, draft resolution 24-061, support for King County Fire Proposition Number One, authorizing fire benefits charge. Item six, Marina Steps Project Amendment, amended task assignment for consult design. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there an item that any council member wishes to pull? So, excuse me, thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Nettie.
I move to approve the consent calendar as red, Mayor.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mahoney for the second, thank you very much. Is there an item that a council member wishes to pull?
Yes. I wish to pull item number six.
Item number six, all right. Okay, so will we now be considering?
I'm sorry, Mayor Bux.
Oh, thank you. Yes, council member.
Item number four.
Item number four. Four, number six. Okay, any other? All right, thank you for interrupting me. So we will now be considering items number one, two, three, and five on the consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And six up here, Councilmember Grace Matsui, are you for, or are you?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. So it's seven zero? Thank you. So we will now consider item number four first, and I'm going to pass it to you, Councilmember Grace Matsui, as you are the one who pulled it. And I'm gonna move the microphone over here.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity. So I'm taking a look at the draft resolution, and I had a couple of questions. One, given that this is a long-term project and the grant may not be fully dispersed until 2027, is interim city manager Tim George going to be the authorized representative for that full time? Or should there be language in Section Two which passes that authorization on to a new city manager?
That's a great question. I will not be the city manager in 2027. Yeah, yeah, you guys, council has some work to do. So this resolution, this is the draft that RCO provides us and says, you have to pass this, you have to fill in this name, and you have to send it back to us. So we don't have, we don't have the ability to, you know, add language. I would say that, you know, there are gonna be pieces like this that we'll just have to note. And when the new city manager is hired, my name will come off of a lot of things. And so this would be something else that we would, we would substitute that.
Okay, so as necessary, we'll update it.
Yeah, that's a great point, though, thank you.
Okay, do you have another observation here? I'm gonna give you another one here.
Yes, I have a couple, actually. So it says in Section 10 that there's a, if there is a match required for the grant, the city must certify the availability of the match. How much is the match going to be?
The match is in kind, so it's not, it's not cash. It's essentially staff time, and I believe it's $100,000.
Let's see. For the boating infrastructure grant program, the state recreation conservation office lists that as a 25% match.
Yeah, so the actual, I don't, I'm not sure where you're seeing that, but this. Yeah, so the actual, I don't, I'm not sure where you're seeing that, but this specific one, the financial piece, is that it would be a hundred thousand dollars. And that will be, so we haven't been awarded this grant, right? This is just a box to check on the way to being considered and potentially being awarded the grant. So what we have designated is a hundred thousand dollars in kind services, which would essentially be staff time that we would use. And so, if they come back and say it's 25, well, then that's a new consideration that we have to, the council will have to make before accepting the grant. Because like it's stated in the agenda packet, this would be brought back to the council with the full terms of the grant prior to it being accepted.
I see what you're saying. I would like to be aware, if we're going to apply for a $1.4 million grant, if we're going to be on the hook to match part of that award in the future, how much it will be?
So for this one, it's a hundred thousand dollars, in kind.
Right, but if I'm applying for a grant that will require a 25% match in the future, do we know if that will also be in kind, or if it will be cash?
This, this grant does not have a 25% match, and if it does, then that would, it does not, it was an eight percent.
Could you, do you have a page reference there?
Right, yeah. I'm under the Washington State Recreation Conservation Office Grant for Boating Infrastructure Program. And underneath, where it says that the typical projects include building more inch docks and floats, it says you can apply.
Can you give a page number of the document? What's the document, page number?
Oh, no. It's on the Washington State, B.I.G. website. And, you know...
So what we're going to, Councilmember Peter Phillips is attending tonight, and so he's coming to the podium to help with this answer. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And since this is my second time speaking to you all, I know I'd push that button now. There is indeed a $675,000 match, which we have not secured, and that's for the battery. So we do anticipate, this is the third in a series of grants that we've applied for, we've gotten the first three, this is the fourth. So we're anticipating that we will be applying for a grant for the battery component, which will qualify as the match. But there'll be no additional monies expected from the city. This will be a separate battery grant that will go in the float.
So I'm...
So we're in...
Oh, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, just to make sure I understand, so what you're saying is, we're applying for another grant to satisfy the match requirement of this future grant, if we were to be awarded it?
Correct.
Thank you. I have one more, I think it's section number... I've lost it, so if someone else has a question...
Sure, I will check back with you, okay?
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
You bet. Okay, other questions? Councilmember Harris?
Yeah. So, my understanding is that B.I.G. grants operate on a two-year cycle. And so I guess my, you know, my thing is, why can't we simply wait two years on this for the next cycle, given the flux in the state of battery chemistry and, and, you know, market demand and, and all of that other stuff? Yeah. I don't know, I mean...
Do you understand the question?
Yeah.
And, yeah, so I mean, if you have any comments, otherwise I just, I have about, you know, 10 other things, but they're not really questions, but there are more for my colleagues.
So if I understand your question, Councilmember Harris, your question is, why are we engaging in this now with the knowledge that battery technology advances and changes, correct?
Yeah, right now, it's just, I mean...
So this, in essence, what we're applying for is the box that would hold the battery. The battery grant comes down the line, when we'll know what that technology is. So this box is designed to accommodate any future technology.
Okay, so then my next question is, the, somebody sent a nice response to a question I had and said that the dwell time is eight to 10 minutes. If that's the case, why can't the boat just pull up to the dock, charge while people are getting on and off? And, you know, Bob's your uncle. In other words, what is the necessity of having the gizmo floating out there? Does that make sense? Is that...
Yeah, it's, the idea is that you will not have to take up onshore space and build a vault, especially for the battery, which could change. This is a way to, to be much more efficient with the entire unit. It's like having the battery right there underneath the dispenser.
Okay, but you're still going to have to pull up to the dock to get, you know, get people on and off, right?
Correct.
This is a floating battery is, is, is kind of the thing. Do, you said something at your presentation before, and is this, I'm sure you're aware of like these, like Aqua and so on, these companies? I mean, is it the intent for us to own the hardware and the implementation, or to outsource that to a company like, you know, like how we do with the parking gates and so on, where they essentially provide the gear and then we take a cut or speed cameras? Do you understand what I'm...
I think so. So the, we're going to, let's call the float the box, we'll talk about two components, the box and the battery. So I would think that the harbor, the city would want to own the float, just the way they own their docks, because that's what it is, really.
Yeah.
The battery, that's a good question. And that, I mean, that would be a question for this second grant opportunity, which is undefined yet, but they're out there, and we're continuing to apply for them.
Okay, and one, and one last thing, while you, oh, I got you. You, we're also applying for a, or we received a grant to do a markets, a demand study on this thing? I mean, that's already in the can to do, or we're...
Yeah, the $132,000 for the, for the economic impact, social impact, and we think we're going to get a secondary transportation grant dependent to that, they've offered us additional money, would be for ferries writ large. You know, what, what, what will a ferry calling at Des Moines do to the city in terms of economic impact and in terms of quality of life for a variety of different communities? And also what, what other secondary transportation needs would there be? And what could those, how could those secondary transportations benefit the people and give them access to the ferries?
And last but not least, there is, they're, they're, they're working on a similar gizmo in San Francisco?
Yep, exactly the same one, in fact. I mean, we kind of copied them.
Okay, and, all right, and, and, yeah, I don't want to monopolize, please, if my colleagues have other, I would like a second round.
Okay, other questions? Councilmember Oxiger.
Well, if, thank you. If, if San Francisco is doing, we're just copying San Francisco, why would we be doing our own? I mean...
They're going to use the one that they build.
But they're, they're developing the idea, right? I mean, this is...
They, yeah, they have a...
Does this thing exist now, anywhere?
I, I don't, I don't know if around the world they have something like this, my suspicion is that they do. And I could, I could look into it and get back to you if you'd like. San Francisco is going to build this. So they have, they already have contracts in place with the designers and the integrators. California has a mandate for zero emissions for all of their ferries. All of them have to be zero emission by 2030. And WIDA, which is the, which is their Washington State ferries, if you will, is deeply into this, they have to do it. So this, they've identified as the most cost-effective, efficient way to electrify and charge their boats. And so they've put this out, they're going to put it out to bid in a month, but they have this, all the design criteria done. So we went and we looked at that, and we said, hey, this would work great in Des Moines. So we are about six to eight months behind them, which means that if we get this grant, they have, will have already awarded their bid to the designer, manufacturer, integrator. So we'll, we'll know who can do this, and then we can follow in their footsteps.
Well, then why wouldn't we just wait until we find out how theirs works?
I mean, there's no reason that we can't, I just think that we'll, we'll get this two years earlier than if we wait. The grant, the, the money was available for the grant, and we applied for it, we've got a good blueprint of somebody who's going to do it, they're going to do it right, and then we can follow in their footsteps. Whether we do it, you know, by end of 2027, or February of 2027, which is what we're scheduled to do now, or 2029, or '31, or '33, '35, that's, that's up to the council to decide.
Well, if they're close to going online, they would, we would know before then, right?
Well, they're, they're, they're close to putting out a request for proposals, and then so...
Request for, okay.
And then, so that would, that will go out in a month, and usually, the RFP period is three to six months. And then they'll award that to a manufacturer who will then build the float.
Okay, so, given the, given the uncertainty of our budget and what's going to happen, you know, whatever the outcome of the levee lid lift is, and what cuts we may have to make, I, I think it would prudent for us to just wait. Let's see what San Francisco does. If we're just, if we're just copying what they're doing, why don't we just wait and see what they're doing? And, yeah, I, I don't think we're in a, we're in a risk positive situation right now.
So the, this, the totality of this project is grant funded? There's no financial exposure to the city, that the in-kind commitment is staff?
Okay. And one of the things we're looking at is having to cut staff if the, if the budget, if the levee lid lift doesn't pass, so I think we're being premature.
So that's, I appreciate your position. The, the point of tonight's resolution is simply to appoint myself as the designated agent for the city. Again, the, if the application is awarded, which we don't know, that would then come back to the city council. So really, the question here is, certainly you can talk about delaying this two years, all the city administration is seeking is approval of a resolution that would designate me as the agent for the city.
Okay, Councilmember, Councilmember Harris.
I'm sorry, did I...
No, go ahead.
I will be voting no on this for a couple of reasons. The most basic of which is that...
Please just have her questions, right now. Well, we'll have a motion.
Well, no, this is not a public, formal hearing, and...
Well, it is, but I'm, but that's how I organize it, so that we can have just questions, then we'll have a motion, and if we get a second, then we'll have discussion.
Okay, well, okay, so then I have an observation, this is not on the Marina master plan.
Okay, do you have a question for Peter?
My, nah.
Okay, there'll be time for discussion, just hold it. Okay, so any other questions for Peter or for the city manager right now? Oh, thank you, yeah. And Yoshiko, do you have, did you find your other question?
No, I think we should go ahead.
Okay, all right. I do have a question. Could you clarify the reason for a battery float, or to use a battery for this charging versus like a direct feed? Where you've got, the power comes directly out of a big cable and goes directly into, into a vessel?
From, you mean, so battery as opposed to coming directly from the grid?
Exactly, exactly. Could you...
Yeah, well, it's the way that the, it's the way that the, the vessel needs to have the electricity delivered, so that they can charge and the, you know, top off in the eight to 10 minutes. So what, the idea with all of these, and this is not new, this is how they all do it, is that you, what they, they say, it trickles into the battery, which stores it, and then when the boat comes in and asks for it, the battery can dump it all into the boat at one time.
Super fast, right? If you had to plug it into direct feed, it would take several hours, probably.
Yeah.
Can I make a quick technical comment? Never mind. We're supposed to have a discussion, and it's like...
We are going to have that discussion after the motion. If we, if the motion doesn't pass, there's no need for discussion, right? So, any other questions? I have one more question. Is there any other work that needs to be done right now, before the grant can be submitted? In other words, staff time, grant writing time, everything that needs to be done as far as that goes is done?
The only staff time required now is Tim's signature.
Okay, all right. So if there are no for the questions, I will call for a motion. Councilmember Nettie?
I move to enact draft ordinance Resolution 24-064, naming the interim city manager as the designated agent for the city in order to apply for the grant funding the Marina charging float project.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mahoney has that one? All right, now it's time for discussion. So, opening the dials for discussion, you have Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be voting yes on this, because I think the ferry project needs to move forward. There's a huge advantage to being first in the market, and this will allow us to get ahead of that market and reap the benefit from that. And I understand that, you know, the entrepreneurial process is really scary to some people, because there's, there is some risk involved, but this is all grant money that we're risking, this is not money that ultimately is going to come out of the taxpayers' wallets. So the risk is pretty minimal to get this going. And if we can get there first, this is what's going to help fix some of those structural financial problems down the line, because now we've got more people coming into Des Moines. I mean, we've been talking forever about getting people to come to Des Moines, this is one of the ways we do it. And so you simply have to change, if we just stay how we are, and we just wait, 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 and see if somebody else can do it better first, and then try to cop him, we'll get nowhere. Des Moines has been waiting 20, 30 years. Just look at the downtown. We have to do something different. This is one of the things that we can do that's different, this is why we need to move ahead with the ferry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? Councilmember Harris.
See, you go to school for 10 years, and you just want to be able to, once in a while, say, okay, the reason you need a battery is because the thing sucks so much energy that it would overwhelm the grid. So the battery acts as a buffer, that's the deal. They have electric stoves now, you put a battery in the stove, and then it can, anyway. Okay, so here's the reason I'm voting no, is because it's not on the Marina master plan. And we should have planning, okay? This is a strategic part of the city's vision. If it's not on the master plan, it needs to go to a committee, revise the master plan, and then put it forward, that's called planning. Sorry, that's the third time. And what we have done over the past 30 years is ad hoc, ad hoc, ad hoc. And we come up with these great ideas, rather than having a, you know, real vision, and you cannot show me any return on investment on this. And also, one thing I learned from many years in the engineering world, there is no free lunch. We have core energy in the staff, and this idea of it's like it's nothing out of pocket, it's going to divert the staff's attention from other projects. Think about what we have on the table now, we've got three dock replacements, hopefully the dry stack thing, the Marina steps. We are taxing our staff. I have watched over the years, just when, when we did 216. It, it, it takes everybody to the limit. did two 16. It, it, it takes everybody to the limit. You're asking, you're talking about doing five, six big things all at once and, and you, and it's just cavalier to say, well, we'll just write a check to parametrics or KPFF or, you know, and, but that's not how it works. You have to have your core staff managing this stuff and it has to have, and it has to be part of a strategic plan. And the idea that we would be first, think about like electric vehicles writ large. They build the Teslas, they sell a few million and then they build the charging stations, okay? And people grouse for a little while and they say, well, I can't charge them anymore. But you guarantee that, that you demonstrate demand and then you build out the grid. That's, you know, you don't like build out the grid and then say, boy, I sure hope people buy these $300,000 electric boats. Um, you, you definitely don't commit the city to this kind of, uh, potential workload without doing a, a, a demand study first. I, I can't, there is literally no 70-person passenger ferry operating on a floating dock on planet Earth. The closest analog is Sweden, okay? And unless, I would, I would make a motion to have the council, um, take a, what do they call it? A junket over to Norway and just sort of see how the boating market is going. But, and, and I'm sorry for sounding so snarky, but the idea that we would commit our resources, our intellectual talent to something this, that, that there is no proof that in two years or five years or 10 years, there's no proof of, that it will generate positive cash flow for Des Moines. Okay? It may be a good idea for King County writ large. It may be wonderful for planet Earth, but until there is evidence that it actually would generate positive cash flow for us, the answer must be no. Okay? I'm not here to save the planet. I'm here to zealously defend the budget of Des Moines and, and we have no evidence that it will generate money for the city. That has to be our primary. All the other stuff is gravy. It's wonderful. But there is no evidence that even if every sailing is full, that it would generate money for Des Moines. It's completely aspirational. And the reason I say it's got to be on the master plan is so you can have that discussion. Show us the evidence that these things, show us the evidence that any water taxi in the area generates a positive cash flow for the surrounding areas. And if you've got that evidence, sweep, I'm, I'm all in. But until then, you wait a couple of years, we, we get some of these other projects over the line and you have great, um, happiness from the public, and then you move on to the next thing. But you don't try to do like all of it at the same time. It, it's just, it's, I, I just can't imagine it, 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 having this much stuff for our engineering people to be doing at this point. So, thank you.
All right. Uh, any other comments? Uh, Councilmember Mahoney?
My evidence is I talked to a lot of the restaurants when we had the passenger ferry beta test and their business was definitely up and they've noticed the difference in the opposite windows of time in the last couple of years. I've seen it and I believe in it. The other thing is, is sometimes it's good to lead change, particularly when green transportation is a focus. And I agree with Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, that being first is important in this particular field and I'm going to support it. Um, our test was successful. Not only did it bring business to our community, we got a lot of positive, um, promotion to our city, but also it offered a great service to our community. Many of the people went to Seattle and enjoyed it. The surveys were, I think, 96% approval ratings and so forth. It's, it's, it's a change. What Councilmember Harris is talking about is taking a passive attitude and that's what we've done for the last 40 years and where that's got us, nowhere. We're talking about, that's what the Marina steps are about. That's an investment in our future to bring investment and development and business to our community so we can raise our sales and use taxes and try to drive a revenue because we're not going to get it from property taxes and we're not going to get it from utility taxes to the extent. We need to drive development and business and invest in our future. And taking a chance, and I think a solid chance like this, is worth every bit of it. And so I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxiger.
I believe what you, you call, keep calling the, the passenger ferry, uh, uh, test a huge success. The, what came out of the whole thing was we didn't lose as much money as we thought we were going to. For every, uh, the, the split was about, uh, two-thirds to one-third. As far, peo- more people were leaving here to go to Seattle than people were leaving Seattle to come here. Our dollars that would have been potentially spent here were going downtown. Now, I can understand how, you know, there's, there's a lot of support from downtown from, uh, I believe, uh, Mayor Buxton, you've cited the guy who's with Ivors and his interest is in promoting downtown Seattle. And we're seen in that whole process as being a supplier of potential purchasers downtown. It, it's not a question of it, you know, equaling out or anything because right now we don't, we're not in a position, we don't have anything, uh, uh, substantial, maybe the, the, uh, the potential for the, uh, landmark. But as far as anything placed out, we don't have, everything's, it's all, you know, well, if we build it, they will come. And we don't know that. And, and quite frankly, we're not in a position financially to take that kind of risk. You know, I, you know, if somebody wants to invest their money in this sort of thing, you know, privately, that's fine. But my job here is to protect the interests of the taxpayers. And, you know, I can't put us, I can't vote to put us in a position that is going to possibly, are we going to require another levied lift in order to meet, to meet these obligations? So I'm a no.
Uh, I'm going to check with Councilmember Grace Matsui here. Uh, Councilmember Grace Matsui, did you have some input here? I can't tell if you're raising your hand or not, so.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, I don't have any input at this time. I, I will say that, um, we had a commitment at one point in time to not have proposals that have a required six-day turnaround time. And it's unfortunate that we are being asked to vote on something that's due, uh, uh, six days before. And it seems to me that we knew this opportunity was coming available. Uh, and I would have liked to have had more time to contemplate it and also to reach out to constituents and get their take on it. Thank you.
So I do want to clarify that tonight, this decision, we, we are veering a little bit from the main discussion here. This discussion probably belongs a little bit more in the Marina master plan discussion. But, um, we are only assigning an agent tonight and this conversation will come up again, it, it only if we receive the grant, if we get approved for the grant funding, we will need to have this discussion again or these observations again in order to receive the funding. And so that is the crucial decision at that point. And I know, uh, you know, there's no way to know one way or the other unless we allow Tim to sign. Um, so I, I just, I do want to corral the conversation a little bit to try and focus it on, are we going to allow our city manager to sign this application? That is the discussion tonight. We do not have to take this grant, even if it's awarded to us and we can talk about this again. And we, we probably will talk about this again. So if we can keep that in mind, as, as I, you raise your hands more here, uh, that would be appreciated. So Councilmember Harris?
It is disingenuous to say, oh, we're just deciding on accepting the grant tonight. Everyone who, uh, who buys that, um, has not participated in government or any corporate type of a thing. These things basically develop their own momentum at every decision more point. You make one thing and thing, you know, and it just develops a life of its own. Um, the fact is it belongs in the Marina master plan and the grant, we've been paying a grant writer, um, we're basically paying like, like 8500 bucks a month between lobbying and grant writing on this, um, apart from our regular lobbyists. Uh, so this thing is something, it's just disingenuous to say, well, we're just, um, and the thing is, notice that our competitor is San Francisco, which is larger than Seattle. So I don't know what San Francisco's budget is, but Seattle's is around $6.5 billion. This project is walking around money for them, okay? It is aspirational R and D kind of a thing. And that's something you can do when you have a $6.5 billion budget, okay? You can dink around with basically R and D, you know, and, and promote like the next big thing because they're like bigger than some states. We have no business being like that bleeding edge on, on, on anything. And so I'm just, I, I understand you're trying to corral that, but.
I am, I am. So, thank you. So, I, couple of comments from my point of view. I do really feel like there's more information coming down the road. We can ask other questions in the future. Um, it, this decision tonight gives us time to consider depending on our budget decisions ahead. It gets this moving in case we want to do it. I fully feel like if there, if we don't come back with good information on a demand study or timing, there's a lot of things out in the future where we can continue to consider this. But it stops here if we don't. That's a pretty exciting project, uh, and quite a bit of investment and money that's available to us if we want to take it, if we get it. So, um, in regard to the master plan, if there was a consideration about putting this in the master plan, I would be voting yes anyway. Um, to the ferry riders, uh, Bob Donigan is not just interested in ferry riders from the city of Des Moines. He recognizes that people will be coming from all over South County to visit the Seattle waterfront and all those people are going to be coming through Des Moines. So it's our responsibility if this all goes through and we do go to the Seattle waterfront and if that, that's all they're interested in, all those people are coming to Des Moines. So we have a capture
Point of order, who's Bob?
Bob Donigan. We talked about him two weeks ago. He is the Seattle waterfront Ivors CEO, Kid Belli. Okay, I was answering, uh, Councilmember Oxiger. So this just gives us an opportunity to think about it longer and talk about it more. And I, you can kind of tell where I'm going with this. Okay, I think for, we need to move forward. We have other things to get done tonight. So I am going to take a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Grace Matsui, where are you in this?
I vote nay.
Vote nay. Okay, three. Councilmember Grace Matsui is nay. So, uh, passes, motion passes on this item. And, uh, now we are actually moving to the Marina steps, item number six. Uh, and I think, Councilmember Oxiger, you pulled that? Is that true? So I'm passing it to you. Let's try and be as brief as possible here. We've got a lot of business left. Keep, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I, I pointed out in the, uh, uh, municipal services, municipal facilities committee meeting that the, you know, the, the council had, I mean, the, the staff had taken the recommendations that it had gathered at the public meeting on this and brought it back. But, you know, there was quite a, so, quite a substantial addition to the project as far as putting in all of the parks, uh, information. And as one of our speakers tonight, uh, pointed out, we, we probably need another, uh, presentation to the public as to, you know, whether or not this project is what we really want to do. And, you know, I, uh, I think at least, at least that. I also have questions though, uh, with regard to, um, a return on investment study as to whether or not this is actually going to bring any money to the city. Or are we just, you know, it, because the thing is, is that way, the way it is now is that parcel A, uh, down there, which is taking up the northern section where the steps are, is right now, uh, designated for revenue-producing. And we're taking it offline. And if there's one thing the city needs, it's revenue. And the, the Marina and its, its uniqueness in our city and in our area, it is the source, the, the Marina is the most positive source of raising the revenue that we need in order to afford public safety, in order to afford our Parks and Rec Department, in order to afford our, you know, operation. So I, you know, I think the commitment needs here, we need a commitment here that this is going to come back to the public before we proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Any, uh, so any questions before we move on toward the motion? So, uh, I think you could either ask the city manager and I think who else is on this? We didn't bring any. That, that's what I mean. So, so we have staff here that can answer questions. Any other questions before the motion, before I could ask for a motion? Okay, I do have a couple. Uh, so why wasn't the pro, this part of the project included before now?
Well, and I know Tommy's coming up and he can, he can add on to this. But if you remember from the public forum that we did previously, there was, most of this was included. There was the water feature, there was the, the play place, all that. And that was, that was, you know, developed through probably three or four years of public input and design. And then at the, the, the main pieces that we've added since the public forum was removing the, um, the overhead lines up top and that would, then we would underground those and then also the, um, the crosswalk. So really the other pieces were already there. They were put in there, um, for the benefit of the community. Um, it's just that between that meeting and now we further designed them, um, to essentially provide for what we can afford based on the total cost of the project.
Right. And, excuse me, to add on to that, um, I wasn't necessarily involved in that process over the last couple of years, but my understanding is that there was always the thought of kind of the park space, the park area and the spray pad. And so those were, um, left out of the original scope of the design with KPFF, just because we wanted to engage the public and see what the public, uh, was looking for in those regards. So, once we went through, we had the survey on our website. Um, I think it was in October of last year and then we had the public forum in February of this year. And we heard loud and clear that those are features that they would like to, um, have.
Okay, now I understand. Uh, is there anything else now that was presented but not covered in design after this? In other words, is there going to be another ask?
As long as we don't change the plan significantly, there would be no change, there would be no, uh, additional ask.
Okay. Uh, there are about, I looked around, there are about 20 spray parks, splash pads in the city of Seattle, um, proper. And there are a few that are this size. Uh, some of them are huge, some of them are small. Uh, is Is there a formula for serving a population size when you're designing a splash pad for a public park?
Not that I'm aware of. And I think that this specific location, we're really confined on space, really. And so, I mean, you have the, you have the steps, and then the walkways that kind of traverse the slope. It all needs to meet ADA. ADA compliance drives that. So, however long those kind of ramps are for ADA, we're left with kind of the side and where we can locate a park or the spray area. We don't, we also want to keep in mind to not encroach at the bottom of the Marina floor there, to not encroach on area to be used as kind of a pavilion for the public or uses for other Marina activities.
Okay, which, what includes like Farmer's Market, okay. All right, so I guess my, how, you know, there was some, a little chatter out about enlarging it. So, what you're saying is if you did make a larger spray park, you would encroach on Farmer's Market space, public, when you say public plaza space, that's what you're talking about?
Right.
Okay. There was also a concern over safety. Could you describe the ground cover at the pad and on the playground?
So, that's still in development. I mean, that's something that we'll look at as we develop the plans. And what's on tonight's ask is basically to further refine those. But we're looking at stuff as like, such as field turf or like the rubber, rubber-type asphalt. So, it's, yeah, it's typical of other play areas.
Okay. Those were all my questions. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. So, where is the water service for the spray thing coming from?
So, there, there is existing water on the Marina floor. And so, we'll, as part of the project, we'll be doing significant utility upgrades through there to bring water to that location.
Okay, so it's not coming from, I'm just curious, like what services are coming from up the hill down to the thing?
Yeah, and really, we're removing services coming downhill. Because right now, there is a utility pole kind of right at the top of the hill there on Cliff Avenue. And currently, that serves facilities down in the Marina. So, when we do the utility undergrounding, that will go away, and the power will be fed from below.
And just to be clear, because I get asked this all the time, the blue stuff, why is it blue? Is it just because it's aesthetically pleasing, or?
In the play area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, no, you have no idea how many people have said, oh, water feature. They think it's just like, yeah.
Yeah, so, the design, as it's developed, we've been working with the landscape consultant and architects on this. And kind of the theme, as you're seeing, is kind of the, they show some greens, and the greens is supposed to be like kelp. So, the thought is kind of a kelp forest kind of winding its way up the hill between the blues of the water.
And, you know, I understand the limits of like Photoshop or Google Earth or whatever. But like, on the other side of the Mariner condos, it looks like you've got like a brick wall thing. The idea is to create sort of an artificial forest that blends in with the trees like going up behind it. I mean, it's going to be, it's not going to look like, it's going to be a seamless kind of a-
And you're talking about on the north side?
Yeah, that thing.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's like, it looks like you've got the Google Earth thing, how it fractalizes everything. But, I mean, I'm assuming that's all going to be like one sort of foresty transition that looks-
Yes, so we're using that as sort of a buffer between the play area and the condos to the north there. And then, that we're the, you're talking about the wall in there, that will be a turnaround for vehicles if needed because of the gates. If you're, if you're headed southbound through the Marina, we need someplace for vehicles to turn around.
And, you know, last but not least, the one public commenter, he made a, what I thought was a very good point in that, so basically, everybody is going to access from the top of what is now like Overlook One. And then, there's like this sort of side path, that ramp, rampy thing, that basically is the access into the switchbacks. And then, the kids go off to the Fun Factory, the blue stuff. And any comments on, I guess I just have a slight concern about, you know, no, it just would, I think it would have been more comforting to have some kind of an aerial or something that just, basically, I'm imagining kids sort of running along there and then down there. And that, he mentioned like a line of sight, and I think that's a valid concern. Anything that could be done to?
I think especially with the play area being sort of vertical. If you're at the bottom, you should have a great view of children as they're playing up and down that hill.
Okay, I was going to make a, and I stopped myself. Okay, thank you, that's, you're very kind.
Any other questions from the dais? Councilmember Oxiger?
Thank you, Mayor. We already have a study going. I understand, I understand we already have a grant for an ROI on the passenger ferry. What would it take to include this in that study?
Well, the grant is specifically for the passenger ferry. So, I think we'd have to apply for a different grant that relates to parks and ROIs, which I'm not aware that there are.
For if we were going to do it only by, if we were going to do it only by grant money. But what I'm saying is, is that, is it worth us to expend the amount of money? Granted, we're tight on all this stuff. But is it, is it worth it for us to expend the money to expand the study that's being funded by the, by the grant to determine whether or not there's a return on investment with this?
I mean, I would say no, but, I mean, that's just my opinion. But I don't know that we really have an answer to that question. So, right now, we're asking the council for an amendment to do the design work for this project.
Well, okay, I will express my fear on this whole thing, is that-
Well, we'll have it, we'll have a discussion in a couple of minutes. And I want to offer a moment here for Councilmember Grace Matsui. Do you have any questions for staff or for the city manager?
Thank you, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, question?
I forgot the two, okay. So, is, so we still have, this might be a Jeff question, but we still have, I believe, one million seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in the ARPA fund allocated to this. And my understanding is that it must be contracted by the end of this year?
Yes.
So, this is the engineering question. I'm not asking for a policy thing, but would it not be possible, isn't the MSC going to cost one million seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? In other words, couldn't we simply, you know, allocate that money for the wall portion? Is there anything in this project, okay, here's, I'm sorry, it's taking me a while. Is, is there, is this project literally holding up, creating the wall? You kind of get where I'm, you know, is it the kind of thing where, where basically these details are holding up phase one, you know, of the thing? And I'm probably putting you in an awkward position, but I'm sorry.
You're asking if we split this project up into two projects. Essentially, the wall and then the stairs. And so, we've, we're moving forward with bidding this out as one project. And that, you know, generally, when you do one contractor in one project, you save money. So, because they're all, it's all related, yes, when you're talking about shoring up the wall and when you're talking about building the stairs, that would all be one, one project. We're not looking at doing them separately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Looks like all of our questions are, have been asked. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the 2022, 2023 On Call General Civil Engineering Amendment Task Assignment, 2023-07.01 with KPFF Inc. to provide engineering design services for the Marina Steps project in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and zero cents, and further authorize the city manager to sign said task assignment substantially in the form as submitted.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mahoney for the second discussion. Councilmember Harris?
I move to remove the spray park element from this proposal. Since it is not, you know, basically, since it's getting water service from the Marina floor, it's too small. And I'm just concerned about just having the, yeah, it's, it's too small. I don't think it's going to be particularly fun. I, it's smaller than my driveway, and-
Do you have a second?
Yeah, so, that's my motion.
I'll say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Looks like you've been talking about-
No, well, it's, it's just, it's too small. It's too small, and it will, and essentially, it will be a distraction to the other purposes.
Okay, my question is, is this even possible? We have a motion and a second. Is it even possible to divide this project up? If it's not possible, it just, but to-
Well, any, I mean, anything is possible. You know, it would just-
It just interrupts the project, and it'd have to be redesigned and redone, okay? So, all right.
That's what the point of this thing is, we're putting it out to design, so.
Okay, so, I got to offer discussion. Do you have a comment, Councilmember Oxiger, since you made a second?
Yes. I agree with Councilmember Harris. You need a, you need a large area for, you know, to have one of these facilities. And also, you need to have, you know, a ideal, or more ideal area for parents to be able to watch their kids when they're participating, this sort of thing. To me, I think this is more appropriate for the beach park. I don't think it's appropriate for the Marina floor.
Okay. Councilmember Grace Matsui, did you have, are you raising your hand?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Mahoney?
I've always envisioned the spray park here, I think, through the public comment, they affirm that. We have, it flows well with what we want for the children in that particular area. And I think it's a definite yes. So, there's, there's no reason why I won't even take it out of the request.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, for your second time.
I just, you know, to the extent that there are hearts and minds to be changed, the spray park at Angle Lake, other ones that I would take my children to, maybe other people's children are more controlled. But kids like to go bananas and nuts, and they like to, they go into the spray park, and then they go out, and they have, they need a certain area around as sort of a staging area. And I think that my read, being at the Marina all the time, is you have people just sort of wandering back and forth to the quarter deck and, you know, looking around, and they are going to, they will be in conflict. Not only with the spray park, but with the whole blue thing writ large. I think it's trying to do, I, I just, I think we're trying to make this thing do five things when it should do two really well. It strikes me as a Swiss Army knife. But the spray park is the most, is the thing that I think, it's just the low-hanging fruit because it's going to be something that other pedestrians just are, are just constantly in tension with. And, and it is the easiest thing to unwind. And anything that simplifies this project, I think, should be welcomed. It's just, the whole thing is trying to do, it's lovely, but it's like a Swiss Army knife.
Okay, but you did say that.
Yeah.
All right. So, point made. Councilmember Oxiger, for your second time.
Yes, thank you. I don't contest the fact that many people have said they want a spray park. I don't think they said that it has to be as part of the steps. And so, I think our evaluation on all this should be is, is this the best place to put it? And the size. So, to me, I think that, you know, it's, I agree with Councilmember Harris that this is just not the right place. That does not mean that I'm voting against a spray park. I'm just voting against where they're proposing to put it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. I, my only comment is I love this project. I'm talking about it a lot. I did my research on spray parks in Seattle. And I'm, and people were, a lot of moms were excited about this when they saw it. So, I'm one of those. So, I am going to take it to a vote. Oh, let's see. Yes, I'm going to take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
It's to, first, the motion is to-
Motion.
It's to remove the spray park.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. The motion is to, what those guys said. Motion is to remove the spray park from the project. All from this design, remove the spray park from this design. All in favor of removing the spray park from this design, raise your right hand. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Grace Matsui, how do you vote?
I do not support that amendment.
Okay, so, and all not in favor, all against, removing the spray park from this project, raise your right hand. Council, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, myself, and how do you vote, Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Yes, I'm against.
Separating it, so that's a five-to-two vote, thank you. And that motion fails. Now, we're back to the original motion, moving to approve the Civil Engineering Amendment Task Assignment. And any further discussion on that? Because this was the first portion of that discussion. Okay, good. I will take it to a vote. All in favor of this, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, myself, and Councilmember Grace Matsui, how do you vote?
Yea.
And in favor, Grace, Councilmember Grace Matsui, all those opposed, Councilmember Oxiger, and Councilmember Harris. Five-two on that vote as well. Thank you. All right. We now move on to a public, the public hearing. And city manager, question? We only have ten minutes left in the meeting, so I want to know if you should start. That's what I'm talking about right now.
Yeah, probably do it, some fifteen minutes or so.
For the whole rest of the meeting?
Well, I mean, you guys can take off your reports if you want.
I think that's probably, that's all we have left, is just reports.
I mean, this should be very fast.
Okay, and, okay. Okay, so, we need to extend the meeting. I'm going to ask by head nod if you're amenable to eliminating Councilmember reports for tonight for the sake of the meeting.
I'll move to extend the meeting to the end of the public hearing.
Well, let's decide about the reports first, if that's going to be part of the meeting or not. If that's going to, if that's not, that may make a difference on the extension time. And I have a nod? Yes, eliminate reports? Okay, Councilmember Nutting, I will take your motion.
I move to extend the meeting past the, to the public, to the end of the public hearing, doing away with the new business, Councilmember reports, presiding officers' report, ending the meeting after the executive session, I mean, after the public hearing.
Seconding.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Nutting, and a second by Councilmember Mahoney. All in favor, or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? You have a discussion on that?
Yes, yes, we had discussed at least one item of new business.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's true. I would like to, if you don't mind, Councilmember Nutting, can we call it a friendly amendment to allow one recommend, one item of new business?
That discussion could take us to ten o'clock.
If we could have a specific time, that would, that would be-
Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen. Okay, we'll see if we can fit it in there. All right, so, it's been, you accepted that amendment to nine fifteen. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself, Councilmember Grace- Councilmember Grace Matsui, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. So, all opposed, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxiger. So, it's five to two, to, uh, motion passes to extend to 9:15. Okay, so now we move into the public hearing, and this is in regard to vacation of right-of-way. The purpose of this agenda item is for the city council to hold a public hearing to consider draft ordinance approving the vacation of a right-of-way. I'll now open the public hearing, and we will begin with a staff presentation by Civil Engineer Mike Wisbont.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Mike Wisbont, Civil Engineer with Public Works. Uh, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive comment, uh, related to the vacation of a public right-of-way known as First Place South. Uh, so, so this is up in North Hill. Uh, so, we received a two-building permit from the residence at 2291 and 2921, uh, for, so basically, the one is to build two single-family homes. And while we were reviewing the permits, we realized that this area has already been vacated, uh, by the non-user status because it has not been improved or, uh, so this area has been, uh, a open right-of-way and it has not been improved. So, while we were reviewing it, we, uh, so, I'll move it to the next slide real quick. So, while we were reviewing the permits, we realized that it was not, uh, it was basically vacated already. So, we had to, uh, discuss with, uh, basically, all the property owners around this area to, uh, to let them know that this area has already been vacated and this two property here will need access to the area. So, we, uh, so we asked Mr. Singh to apply for a, uh, right-of-way, uh, for, uh, a, uh, street vacation. And as I've mentioned, the areas, uh, the area is, is currently an open right-of-way, which is technically subject to statutory vacation under the Washington State non-user, uh, non-user status, statutes. And the statutory vacation is basically a legislative act that extinguishes, uh, the public use of a, uh, right-of-way, uh, under the Washington's, uh, non-user status statute. And so, because it's been vacated already, but we, uh, it requires a formal and official, uh, process to eventually, to officially record the, uh, to, uh, to record the vacation. So, we, the city staff and all the properties owner had, uh, met, uh, to basically express what was the issue and, uh, tell, tell all the property, all owners to understand what was the issue. And we had a meeting and all the property owner expressed their agreement to vacate the, the property. And so, um, this is just the typical process that we usually go through for all the, uh, vacation. I know I've done so many presentations on this one. Uh, for the sake of time, I wanted to save you time on this. Uh, so, this area is basically, uh, it's classified as Class C because no public funds were, uh, were expanded in acquisition of this right-of-way and it's never been improved for, uh, transportation purposes. And per, uh, the Des Moines Code, the, uh, the municipal code, uh, it requires no compensation since this is a Class C. And we've reached, as part of the process, we've reached out to all the utilities, uh, and only two utilities, uh, asked for a easement. So, Midway Sewer, uh, District and Island Water District requested a 10, 10-foot, uh, 10-foot easement. And then, so basically, all the, all, uh, all the owners abating the area to be subject to being vaca, vacated, expressed agreements to vacate the area. The right-of-way is now used for pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Uh, so the access to the lot will be through an access easement with neighboring properties because if they do not get an easement, then it will create a landlock. That's how they call it. Uh, the right-of-way is not necessary for present or future use by public utilities, excluding Midway Sewer District and Water, uh, Island Water District. And this area, uh, does not contain an active growth protection easement. So, uh, I have a motion on the table for your consideration, and that concludes my quick presentation.
Nicely done. Thank you. So, it's now time for the public comment portion of the public hearing. Please keep your comments respectful and understand that speaking or acting in a disruptive manner, you could be removed from, from the meeting. Please state your name and city of residence. When you come to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak. And I do have two people sign up to speak. Uh, first up is Larry Scott.
Hello, my name's Larry Scott. I'm the owner of 160. It's the corner of, uh, 210 and Second. My, the back of my property backs up to the proposed, um, access for a road back into two lots. Um, I have two concerns. One is that a process is the communication from the city of giving us the easement back to our properties. I don't recall there ever being a notification of that property being given back to us until the proposal of these two lots having access to that. That's one concern. The other concern is whether or not there was a feasibility study or whether there was a reason that the access to these slots couldn't be just extended from the north, from the one, one lane that was done to the one property, just extend that to the other two properties versus having a contractor spend money for 450 feet from the south versus 150 from the front. Just my concerns. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, Chuck Ballard.
I guess this is on. Uh, Chuck Ballard, I live at 21021, First, First Place South. Um, the, my concern is, I have two concerns. It's, you know, there's an awful lot of really unruly drivers come off of First Avenue heading east up 210th, and they, and there's, the first stop sign is up on Second Avenue, I believe. So, if that easement is opened up and the people start to pull out there, I'm afraid of an accident, a serious accident. Uh, I don't know if there's an intent to put a stop sign there, even though it's just an easement. If it's not a city street, maybe they don't put a stop sign, but that's really concerning to me. Uh, and that, that's the, the, the point I'm most concerned about, uh, is the, is, the second concern is, uh, whether or not there, there will ever be a reconsideration and decide to make it a full street. Is that a possibility? And I understand that it will be blocked so that people cannot come from the north to the south from, well, that'd be 208th all the way down to 210th and use that as a street, especially when traffic backs up, as you know, all the way up the hill on First Avenue in the evenings. They start using that, then it puts a terrific, terrific amount of traffic right down our street, and I'm concerned about that. So, I'd like some form of assurance that, uh, that that is a part of the plan, is to never open up that street. I don't know if you can give that kind of assurance, but that's, that's my request. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, uh, next, I need to ask as part of the process, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Okay, second time. Is there anyone who did not sign up to speak who wishes to speak? Third time, anyone who wishes, anyone who didn't sign up to speak who wishes to speak? Okay, next up, council questions. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Oxiger?
Uh, yes. Uh, the normal pro, well, let me ask this question first. Uh, lot, uh, 11, uh, or 114, can we, can we pull the map up? Okay, the property down off of 210th, uh, property 114, is, are there structures in the right-of-way?
Yes. Well, there are structures in the platted right-of-way.
Okay.
So, I think that's kind of key, and I'll just kind of summarize what Mike explained, was that, so this, these plaits, right, these lines here were drawn in 1888, when this area was originally platted. And then, in 1889, the state legislator passed a law that said, "Any right-of-way, if you don't develop it within five years, that underlying right-of-way goes away." And so, this right-of-way was never developed. So, by operation of law in 1894, it disappeared. So, that, when we're talking about the notice requirements, I, I, I was going to make a joke about how old some of our staff members are, that they failed to provide notice to this gentleman that his property reverted back to him, but it occurred in 1894. So, what happened with the other roads, and this is sort of a unique issue to Des Moines because we were platted so early and we weren't developed. All those other roads probably went away too, but because we built them in the right-of-way, it, you essentially create an easement by prescription because the, the road is there after a certain amount of years. Now, we, we basically retake that right-of-way back. So, when we, when we looked at this, we looked at that right-of-way, and if you see the property 20906, just to the north, you see how their line juts out into the road? That's because that individual knew about this non-user statute when they were building that road coming down, and he sued the city and said that, "I own the property in front of my house, not you," because there wasn't a road there, and ultimately, he was right. Um, and so, that's another method. Um, so the individuals, these individuals here could have sued us and gotten the same result. Um, what they did is, you know, they came in, we explained this piece to them. Because it wasn't developed, the right-of-way doesn't exist, there's never been a road there. Um, and so, essentially, we have a process right now through the vacation process for the city council to extinguish any sort of claim we have into that property. So, that's what we're doing tonight. They could have also sued us and, and we would have done that through the courts. And we actually have, uh, on August 8th, we have a settlement agreement on a different property that did sue us for the same kind of thing. Um, and so, that'll be coming forward. So, there's two methods to, to extinguishing these claims of the city of ownership, but we actually don't have ownership. We just have a map that shows that we at one time had a plat that showed that as right-of-way. So, it's, it's very kind of a unique problem for cities that were platted so early, um, and not developed.
Okay, so, and then the, the, as I understand, the normal process is that when you vacate a, uh, the right-of-way through here, half goes to one side, half goes to the other.
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, looking on the map, uh, 20915, 20927, and 160 are all going to get half of this.
Yes.
Okay, so, they're, and they're aware of that?
They're, for the most part, they're sitting here. Yes, and we've met with all of them, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay.
So, we told them their property tax bill will increase slightly, but...
I, I know the experience. I had a backyard, is exactly the situation.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the thing is, is that, okay, if that property goes, if, if half of this goes to those properties, and the access is going to come then off of 210th to, to serve, serve as access for 20921 and 20929, and we already have, we already have development encroaching on the, you know, west side of the, west side of the, the vacation, is that go, is there going to be sufficient room there for there to be an access road that could serve those two houses? And I'm...
So, it's a private access.
Okay.
And so, that, you know, there's, there's standards for private access roads. Uh, but yes, it'll be across other individuals' properties, and so, they're working out a private easement agreement for access. So, the city, other than requiring the access to be up to private access standards, um, we will not have any control. It's not a public street, and that's why there will be a gate up top so that you would never have, um, through access from 210th to whatever is up, up, up above that. Um, unless, and the only way this would happen would be if the city condemned those properties and bought them back and then built a real road through there. So, I, the council could theoretically do that someday if you wanted to buy a bunch of land up there and punch the street through. Um, but it will, absent that, it would be a private road on private property through an, uh, easement agreement with those two homes that they've negotiated with the owners to the south.
The owners to the south with 114?
Well, that whole yellow piece, they got to drive through there, and so, they're essentially driving through other people's properties.
So, they're going to have to have, they're going to have to have, uh, an agreement with 20915, 20927, and 160.
Yes.
In order to have it wide enough. So, this is something they're all working out?
Yes.
Okay. And also, um, do the, do the road, or do the, the access standards change if it's just to one property as opposed to two properties? I'm thinking in the case of fire engines or anything like that as far as access, do we have to, I mean, is that going to affect the size of the road that they're going to be discussing?
Yeah, so for two properties, the minimum, uh, width is 16 feet. And, uh, looking at the permits, yes, it's going, the access, uh, driveway would feed through this area without making any changes to this property here, to the fence. Because if you can see, there is a fence right at this location, and we have managed, uh, with, uh, these two applicants to have the access through this area without, uh, disturbing the fence.
Okay, thank you very much.
I would like to clarify with both of you, just because it seems this way, you are both, both people who testified tonight are in favor of this moot motion. You're not.
I do have another question. The question is, did I hear someone say, maybe you said that they, it will be gated at the north end of those lots so they can't come all the way through or not?
Yeah, so the plan is to do an end-of-road treatment. So, it could be ecology blocks, it could be a type three barricades. We are still working with the applicant on that.
Who, who would do those? The builders?
Yeah, the builder will block the road. So, there will not be any access north to south.
Because if there, if there, if that doesn't happen, then you got, you got a full, people are going to drive down that street, even though it's not a real street, they're going to use it.
Okay.
I guess, what I would say is, if individuals are for or against this, the city doesn't own this property. And so, what we're doing tonight is passing a motion that acknowledges that the city doesn't own this property.
Any questions? Any other questions? Councilmember Harris?
So, basically, if we do not pass this, we open ourselves, we expose ourselves to some sort of lawsuit, a potential lawsuit.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, there's, the, the status quo, if we maintain the status quo, um, because we're such swell people, um, the, the next property owner can, who watches this meeting can, uh, yeah, uh, basically...
Well, I would say it's not the next property owner, it's the property owner that applied for this.
Yeah, right. Um, okay, I just, just, I just want to un, understand that there isn't, um, it doesn't sound like there are too many options, uh, viable options. Um, but, but we got a letter from someone who said, "Please, can you maintain some form of, uh, you know, walkway through?" And, um, I'm assuming that the answer is no. Um, I just, yeah.
Because, and you're saying that's correct, no is the answer, because we do not have control... of this property, it's not ours?
It's private property.
It's private property. Okay. We only have about three minutes left. Any other quick questions? All right. I will now close the public, public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 24-063, approving the vacation of a portion of unimproved right-of-ways specifically identified and legally described in the draft ordinance, ordinance number 24-063.
Do you have a second? A second with Councilmember Mahoney, discussion? No discussion, take it to a vote. Oh, wait a minute, Councilmember Grace Matsui, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Take it to a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Harris, and myself. Councilmember Grace Matsui, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. So, it looks like a seven zero, it passes unanimously. Okay, so, we are, we have two minutes left. You want to wait? Okay, good. It looks like we, the next, since we only said to 9:15, we didn't agree necessarily in comments, I'm going to ask if we can eliminate Councilmember comments and anything else on the agenda tonight before we close. Nodding of a hand, okay. And this concludes our meeting. Next meeting date will be July 30th, 2024, the city council executive session. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. Councilmember Steinmetz, do you have a motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mahoney. All in favor, raising your hands. Councilmember Grace Matsui, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. We are closed. We did it.